Good afternoon, everyone, and I now call the special council meeting of Tuesday, May tenth, to order reconvening from April twenty eighth. Special council meeting has been called in accordance with Sections two point five and fourteen point five of the procedure by law. The purpose of this meeting is to continue to provide council an opportunity to hear from speakers on public safety citywide. Council members are reminded that in accordance with Section fourteen point thirteen of the procedure by law, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. And with our longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, just remind councillors to avoid using gendered honorifics when addressing speakers and staff. We acknowledge that we're on the unceded traditional territories, the Musqueam, Kwamish, and Sabaltoos people, and we thank them for their generosity to all who live on these lands as we move forward toward our goal of becoming a true city of reconciliation. Just want to take a moment, too, to thank staff for everything they do to make this city a great place to live. Clerks, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr is on a leave of absence for civic business, councillor De Genova. Present.
Councillor Fry. Councillor Fry?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks. Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly. Not here, councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much, clerks. If council does not conclude the business today, and we have, I think, sixty-one speakers on the list, the meeting will recess and reconvene tomorrow at three P M. That's Wednesday, May eleventh at three P M. Council were present when the member motion prioritizing public safety was first introduced, and no member has declared a conflict of interest. Just a reminder that no decision is required today. Ideas and input from tonight's meeting will assist staff in creating a report back with recommendations, which is anticipated to be presented to council next month. Before we continue hearing from council, from speakers, I'd like to note the following. A reminder that in accordance with Section seven point eight of the procedure by law, persons in the public gallery must not address council members without permission, applaud or otherwise interrupt the speech or action of council members or a speaker addressing council members or otherwise engaged in improper conduct. Furthermore, in accordance with Section seven point nine of the procedure by law, the chair may expel a member of the public who engages in improper conduct. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and may only speak once. Council members may ask questions. Those speakers have up to three minutes following their presentation. However, speakers are under no obligation to respond. Public is strongly urged to listen to proceedings via the city's website or YouTube link and to follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting. Any comments on the web, on the agenda may be sent to council using the web form on the city's website. The link to that forum will be tweeted out on at Van City Clerk. Following last speaker on the speakers list, we will go back over the speakers list, calling those who missed their turn and give them an opportunity to speak. I'll also ask if speakers are resident of Vancouver if it's not noted on the speakers list. We'll now continue hearing from registered public speakers, beginning with Speaker J. That's Nick Pogor, the executive director of the Commercial Drive B I A.
Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak today. This is a super, super important issue, not only for the residents of Vancouver, but a very, very pressing matter for small business in the city of Vancouver, and especially, especially on Commercial Drive. Crime, vandalism, graffiti, excessive open liquor consumption, drug use, camping in our parks and on our streets, and most recently, a murder in one of our parks. A revolving door where perpetrators are back on the street committing offenses the next day is the norm. A recent B C Urban Mayor's Caucus study found that in thirteen communities that make up the caucus, two hundred people had eleven thousand police interactions in one year. This highlights the state of our streets and also the street disorder on Commercial Drive at present. Street order is at an all-time high on Commercial Drive, and the worst we have seen it in the many last decades. Those who live in the neighborhood, those who visit the neighborhood, those who work in the neighborhood, all have concerns for their own safety. Small business cannot and should not be left to manage safety and security services in their retail, in their retail districts. It has become unmanageable, and it is not financially feasible. We understand the challenges. We hope there are solutions. We want to be a part of the groups and the teams who come up with ideas and come up with solutions. Some recommendations that we have are that park board rangers are present in all of our parks in Vancouver, not just those parks that are deemed tourist assets. Street-level support for those experiencing homelessness, mental health, is imperative. We need to provide support to the V P D for homelessness issues, for mental health issues. The V P D cannot be left alone to manage all of these issues on their own. To alleviate some of the workload on the V P D, we highly recommend that street-level outreach and resources are provided to and put forth by Vancouver Coastal Health and B C Housing. Again, it is imperative that on-street level homelessness and addiction outreach become part of the work to this end. This would include B C Housing Patrols working alongside Vancouver Coastal Health Outreach and providing housing options wherever possible. Another super, super important component of these solutions is the V P D, of course. Some of the stats provided by Chief Palmer at the previous meeting were astounding to hear. Over two hundred and fifty missed calls or unanswered calls to nine-one-one per day. This is unacceptable. Ecom needs to be overhauled so that each call, two-nine-one, is answered. V P D also needs to be present in our retail districts at street level. We cannot recommend enough that some form of beat patrols on Commercial Drive and in our retail districts become the new norm. Community policing does serve our communities to some extent. However, community policing is more of a community service. There are not police services provided by community policing. It's important to know that. Many of our retail districts are lucky enough to have community policing, but the name policing in the title does not, in fact, mean that those community service providers provide policing. Please consider beat patrols on Commercial Drive and in our retail districts as a component of providing safety and security to our residents and to our small business in the city of Vancouver. All of this requires more housing solutions, and I applaud the city's work in recent months and recent years to gain support from the provincial and federal levels to this end. This is good work. Keep it up. I really applaud you for that, and it is a big, big part of the.
Thank you. You're on your five minutes. You are at your five minutes, but you do have a question from councillor De Genova.
Go ahead, councillor De Genova.
Thanks very much, Nick. Really appreciate you making the time to speak and come back. I'm wondering if, first of all, have you made your formal request to the Vancouver Police Department regarding what you're calling beat patrols, right? I suppose foot patrols?
The partnership, the B I A partnership, the twenty-two B I As in the Lower Mainland had sent a letter to the, in support of the V P D budget prior to that budget going to council, and in that letter, all twenty-two B I As had asked for beat patrols in their retail districts.
Okay, so this goes beyond Commercial Drive specifically, and every single B I A in the partnership would like to see that. Is that correct?
I would say for the most part, the majority of retail districts would like to see that and need those services in their areas, for sure. Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm wondering, you were talking a little bit about sort of the B C housing homeless outreach teams or programs. I'm wondering, what, what do you think? Do you feel that the city has a role to play that when we work with the province to house people who are experiencing homelessness, that we make sure that we have that adequate level of support? So even if they do have housing, per se, they have a room with a key, and there's a front desk person there. Do you, do you have a position on behalf of the Commercial Drive Business Association as to whether or not that's enough? Do you feel that there needs to be more support? And when we allow this to kind of move into our city without those appropriate supports, that's where we're seeing some of these issues? Is that your opinion? Just from hearing you speak, I was wondering if you could elaborate a little?
Yeah, definitely. Housing is a big component in getting, in lifting people up. And, you know, definitely, we support providing a helping hand, but we also want to ensure that people experiencing homelessness issues, mental health issues, those that need housing, also are provided the supports and the rehabilitation models that would see them, you know, attain success in whatever form that means.
And can I, can I just ask, oh, sorry, I was just gonna ask quickly. I only have thirty seconds left, but would you say that your businesses, the businesses in your association have seen an uptick in violent shoplifting and broken windows?
A hundred and fifty percent, yes.
Thanks, that's my time, Nick, but I will follow up by email with more questions for you. That's okay.
Thank you so much. Thanks. We're going to move on to the next speaker now, and no other questions for you, speaker. Thank you so much for calling in and all you do for the city. The next speaker is Zafaria Glarus.
Speaker one is not in the chamber nor on the line.
Thank you very much, clerks. And please keep track, if you can, of the folks that have missed their turn, and we'll call them at the end of the meeting. Thank you. We have Eddie Elmer, speaker number two.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eddie Elmer. I have lived, worked, volunteered, and been an avid walker in downtown Vancouver for twenty-one years now. As a not-so-masculine gay man who grew up being bullied in school, I moved to Vancouver looking for some peace, acceptance, and safety in what I knew was one of Canada's safest places for gay people. And for eighteen years it was. No matter the time of day or night, I could safely walk anywhere, even in some of the rougher parts of town, without anyone bothering me or targeting me for my sexual orientation. But over the last two years, things have changed, and I'd like to describe some of what I have experienced. On an evening in March twenty twenty, a man approached me near Coal Harbour Community Centre as I was on a nightly walk. He followed me, tried to engage me in conversation, and then called me, and forgive my language, he called me a faggot. He sped up behind me and then told me that if he wanted to, he could put a bullet through my skull. Fortunately, I was able to get away from him and call police before he harmed me or other people. Less than a year later, I was standing at the corner of West George and Berard when a man next to me called me an effing Jew and then struck me in the leg in plain view of other people. He crossed the street, and I called police again, after which he was arrested. In July of last year, during Pride of all times, a man on Robson Street blocked my path, accused me of stealing his belongings, and called me a goof. Then he punched me in the chest and tried to steal my phone. I was able to get away and call nine-one-one, but given the man's size, I might not have been able to do that. Police arrived and arrested him moments later. A few weeks later, a man near Canada Place told me that I was blocking his view and that this area wasn't for gay people. The gay people, he told me, are in the West End. I left, but not before he got up and approached me in a threatening manner. I contemplated calling police, but hesitated because it was a Saturday night, and I had noticed during my walk that police were very busy attending to other incidents. Instead, I filed a report a couple of days later. The man has never been located. I've also experienced or witnessed less serious incidents on West Georgia Street, Granville, Berard, Thurlow, Robson, Butte, and most disconcerting of all, Davie Street, which is supposed to be the city's quintessential safe space. I've also been threatened or nearly assaulted when checking on people who appear to be unconscious or in distress. While I refuse to live in fear, I've become preoccupied with my safety. I'm hyper alert to my surroundings and react strongly to the slightest noise. I look over my shoulder more than I'd like. I view people with suspicion and avoid eye contact. At night, if I see someone walking towards me, I cross the street. I come home feeling uneasy and depressed because I can't enjoy my city the way I used to. But what upsets me more than anything is how people have seemingly blamed me for these situations. I've been told it's my fault for walking at night, even though many stranger assaults happen during the day, and even though, for reasons I don't have time to explain, I actually feel safer at night than during the day. I've also been told it's my fault for walking alone, even though attacks happen when people are with others. Apparently, it's also my fault that I walk in dangerous parts of town, even though the central business district is hardly what anyone would have called dangerous two years ago. It's also my fault that I've been threatened when checking on people because I don't know how to speak to them nicely, or it's my fault that I didn't get a good enough look at an assailant in order to satisfy a crown attorney. It's my fault that I hesitated to press charges as if fear of retaliation were not a valid worry. And it's my fault that talking about these incidents exaggerates how bad things have become, or some people have accused me of doing, lying about these incidents in order to gain attention. So often, it's easier to blame victims than to look ourselves in the mirror and ask if we've been doing all we can to protect them. About the only time I've seen a change in attitude is when someone in power has been the victim of a crime themselves. But I definitely wouldn't wish my experiences on anyone. What I do wish, in conclusion, is that all of you listen intently to every victim who speaks tonight, this afternoon, and then try to put yourself in their shoes and ask how you'd feel if that person were your own son or daughter, or someone you care deeply about, and then ask yourself if you've done everything you can to keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for your experiences. Thank you for coming in today, and councillor Kirby Young has questions for you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Hi, Eddie. Thanks for speaking to council and sharing that. I know, I know that you walk a lot, and so you do see a lot that happens in the city. I just wanted to delve into sort of the notion, you sort of said it's your fault because sometimes it's deemed that you're not compassionate enough, or that there might be repercussions. Can you expand on what you meant by that?
Well, repercussions, there is talk, so what was I talking about? It was in the context of pressing, pressing charges. I do have concern that if I go ahead with charges, that the person I'm, I, the person who's assaulted me will see me on the street at some other point and harm me. I mean, I think it's a legitimate concern. And in two cases, I didn't press charges for that reason. The last two cases, I actually did go ahead and do it.
With respect to maybe zeroing in on your comment around, you know, sometimes you're told you're not compassionate enough, do you think that, is it your experience, or do you think that we're becoming less tolerant, and that people that are generally having these experiences are becoming fearful of being spoken out about because they're told that they're not compassionate, or they're not sensitive enough to the social issues that are happening in the city, and that people are just feeling intimidated?
Well, I can't speak for other people. I can only speak for myself. I mean, I have had, I've been hurt quite a bit when I, when I've commented on my experiences on social media and if had people tell me, well, you just weren't nice enough to somebody. And I actually go out of my way to check on people, sometimes in alleyways, all by myself at two in the morning. And so it's really offensive to me when people say that I'm not doing enough. I mean, I'm constantly calling police and ambulance and fire to help people who are in distress, and I almost been assaulted doing so, and it's really hurtful when I hear people. But I continue to do my part because we have to do our part. We can't rely on police and everyone else, and I, you know, I do what I can, so.
Okay, but at the end of the day, ultimately, after all those experiences, you feel differently about your city?
Yes. I feel, like, I feel, like, I don't, I don't even know the right word. It just feels, doesn't feel welcoming. It does not feel nice when I go for my walks. Like, I used to walk because it was relaxing. I don't feel relaxed anymore. It feels almost like a bit of an ordeal. I mean, I still do it. I don't want to be governed by fear, but it really just changes my whole sense of the city, and at times I've thought of moving, because it's just, I mean, is it really worth putting myself in danger to do a basic thing like going for a walk or going to the store?
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You do have another question from councillor De Genova. Councillor De Genova, please go ahead.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Eddie, for sharing that, and I just want to start by saying I'm, I'm really sorry that that happened, too. It's really deeply disturbing to hear stories like that, but I really appreciate your courage in coming forward and sharing that. Can I, can I ask you, and you don't have to answer my question, but in each of the incidences, you'd mentioned that you had contacted police. Did you contact police right away?
In three, let me see here, in three of the four incidents, yes, and one of them I delayed. And I believe I contacted the next day, and the Canada Place incident, I didn't call right away on that one, again, because I, I had seen the police were busy, and frankly, I just kind of worried that, I don't know, that I'd be blamed for it. I mean, it's kind of an irrational fear, and the police would never blame me for this, but so many things have happened to me, and I've heard so many comments from people on social media and even my friends, that sometimes I question myself, saying, well, maybe I am doing something wrong and attracting this kind of behavior.
I want you, I want to be very clear that in asking you that question, that's not at all what I meant, and I'm happy to hear that you did report it. I'm wondering, you had also spoken about talking to other people who had been in similar situations to you. I think that you'd spoken about this when you last talked to us on another issue, and public safety came up. So can I ask, I mean, do you feel that there are a lot of people out there that don't report the things that happen to them? Because they do feel ashamed, or they do blame themselves for whatever it might be, going out at night or checking on someone like you, you, you did, to be kind?
Totally, totally. And one of the things I hear quite often is people will not call police unless some, they consider something extremely serious, and that basically involves being assaulted physically. I've heard many people have been assaulted. I've even heard people have been assaulted, but they haven't been injured, so they didn't call police because they didn't feel it was worth going through the whole rigmarole of the legal system. But yeah, there's a lot of under-reporting. Everything that happens to me, I report. Everything that I see, I report because we need to know what's happening in our neighborhoods, and it's important for people, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Can I, can I jump in? They don't give us very much time, but I wanted to ask you, if you didn't mind, why is it that you, you feel safer at night? You had mentioned to us that you feel safer at night.
Yeah, it's kind of strange. Like, actually, what I've noticed is when I'm, when I'm attacked and when other people are attacked, it's usually because someone's in someone's immediate personal space or within arms length, and I find that during the daytime, it's harder to maintain distance. It's easier to do at night. And at night, it's easier for me to scan my environment to see if there's anything unusual happening or if somebody's following me. So it's kind of, it's strange, but that's sort of the city that we live in right now. I feel safer at night.
That's my time, but thanks very much for sharing your story.
Thank you so much for your, for calling in today. That is it for questions, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker now. Speaker number three of sixty-two is Lorraine Lowe.
Oh, hi there. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I just, I'm here because I just wanted to address just the general issue of public safety, as I probably don't need to reiterate the stuff that goes on in Chinatown all day. That's what Twitter's for. So I just want to echo the same sentiment as what Chief Palmer had mentioned about the importance of complex care, three levels of government being involved, and a multi-pronged approach, which requires a concerted effort by all the various agencies. So what I'm seeing right now, the current fail policy pitting marginalized communities against each other. And the main issue here is not the broken windows, the poop and vandalism. It's always been the case that it's much more than that. That's just a symptom of a bigger issue that we have. You know, you call it complaining and whining. I'm pointing out the systemic racism that's happening here. Would this be happening in other communities such as Carisdale? You know, we heard last week from members of our business community about the real daily experiences. Trying to run a business, they should have a right to express their opinion without being attacked and gaslit. They're real lived experiences, and that doesn't take away from the serious, complex issues here. So other impacts of other people are real, and, you know, it's incredibly discouraging for others in my community to speak out. And my experience being there daily and working, like, with a number of different groups, like seniors, volunteers, staff, business owners, is that there is a strong plea for a visible presence of public safety and resources, and we need that safety for the marginalized Asians and seniors in our community. That's what I'm hearing from seniors, that there is a lot of fear of coming out and a lot of worries, and they're afraid to get out of their house. So, you know, I do feel like we're left to fend for ourselves, and, you know, with boots on the ground for our seniors, small businesses and community supports like Ember, you know, the current system and policies are continuously hurting our community. And, you know, God forbid addressing the elephant in the room when we talk about why the stores are boarded up. You know, people leaving our cultural heritage slowly being erased. Yes, it's gentrification. And, you know, we're resilient people, and our community continues to be bullied into being silenced. And, you know, the attitudes that have been formed, like the pandemic, foreign ownership, money laundering. There's, so there's so much built-out envy and resentment, and it turns into this counterproductive toxic narrative that gets projected onto us Chinese people, and we lose focus on what got us here in the first place. Like, the flawed systems in place, which has not helped our neighborhood and our neighboring communities, like Strathcona, Downtown Eastside, Crosstown. So my message is, don't hate the player, hate the game. It's what's transpired in the last ten years, the way development has been handled that got us here. Now we need to figure out solutions. And examples of policies that are in place, like the empty storefront tax, that's not the issue, like, the stores, the store owners don't want to keep their shops empty. So, yes, we need to tackle the issue of unaffordability, but in the meantime, we need to call for more immediate actionable support from all three levels of government, starting with the lowest hanging tree before we address the very much valid other social issues. So, you know, if we plan to build back better, part of that plan must be investing and prioritizing in the small businesses and ethnic communities, and that includes public safety involving, you know, all these agencies. Like, for example, you know, we're getting amazing support from the Arts and Cultural Services on funding activations of events and festivals to attract more violence to foot traffic. Community support such as Ember, policing, Vancouver Coastal Health and Mental Health. And, you know, you've got these great community advocates from, like, the opposite downtown east side trying to improve by working with our community and working together. So I do believe there needs to be a balance between policing, harm reduction, treatment. I know abstinence does not work for everybody, and nor does harm reduction, but there are models that we, that are out there that we can look at and possibly, like, implement here. So, you know, that, I think, starts with accountability, and I think that's a key to recovery, you know, reporting respect for law and law enforcement. So, you know, and I'd like to erase, somebody had mentioned before about, you know, community policing centers. It's more acting as like a policing, like, not a policing body. It's a supportive services for accessibility for, like, for example, artists of Chinese-speaking communities. So, you know, having those supports are also very helpful. But yeah, in a nutshell, needs to be more balanced. There needs to be respect for law and order in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have questions, councillor De Genova? You have three minutes.
Thanks so much. So many questions in only three minutes, Lorraine. Thanks for hanging on the line over to two different meetings here. I wanted to ask you about something. You don't have to answer my question, but I did notice online that when you have spoken out about public safety and issues that you're seeing in Chinatown, that you often have been attacked by certain groups. that you often have been attacked by certain groups. And I'm just wondering, and I want to, I want to, first of all, thank you for for continuing to speak your truth and speak for Chinatown and in your role as the, you know, Executive Director of The Garden. But I'm also wondering, do you feel that there are people that aren't as strong as you that are reluctant to speak, especially after they heard, you know, Henry and Tracy speak the other night? And then they were attacked online as well?
Absolutely, you know, it it's, it's hard to watch because, you know, these people are, it's their real lived experiences. Like, this is what's going on. Nobody is, you know, calling on anybody else. It, it, this is a systemic thing. So, you know, the issue, like, let's not pit communities against each other. You know, we are all there, we all share the same concerns and we all just want to to be in a better community. That's all.
Do you think that there are others that probably would have spoken out or or feel that if they do speak out, that their businesses will be targeted, um, in Chinatown?
Yes, and, you know, obviously, that's what's happened. And, you know, we can't, it, it, there, there needs to be some sort of differentiation between, you know, people having, expressing their their real experiences, like the horrors that they face daily versus, you know, what, you know, what goes on. It's that fact reality, right? Nobody's attacking anybody here. Let's not pit people against each other. This is about, uh, uh, an issue that that's, you know, in the policies and and what, but in place of where we're situated doesn't help either, right?
And thanks so much. I have one minute left and I want to ask you, after this meeting, after we hear from all of these speakers, what do you want to see, Lorraine? Sorry to put that on you, but what is it that you want to see? I mean, after this, there's no clear, I mean, staff will be coming back to us with recommendations as per the motion. But I, I'm just wondering, what do you want to see happen and how quickly does it need to happen?
Oh, as quick as possible, of course. Um, I I do feel like there's the lowest hanging group right now in our community specifically, you know, having the boots on the ground and having that vibrancy, having people come back into the community. I mean, that is what's key with tourism coming back. Hopefully, you know, that that's going to help. But, you know, all three levels of government really need to step up and be involved and not kick the can down the, down the road. So, you know, I'm hoping to see a more concerted effort. And, you know, that has to do with housing too, right? Like, you know, this is a whole different conversation. But, yeah, I I do feel like, you know, it's a system thing.
Thanks so much.
Councilor Kirby Young, up to three minutes, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And hi, Lorraine, I have two questions for you in the three minutes I have. Um, the first one is really with respects to seniors, um, because I know that there's a large number of seniors in Chinatown. Um, and I'm wondering if you can speak a bit about their daily experience. I had a chance to attend one event, um, that I think The Garden put on, treading to help low-income seniors and provide them with some culturally sensitive food and just to help them get out, um, after being shut in for a long period of time with COVID. And then with a woman, and this is where my question is going to, who was holding an umbrella and it was a sunny day. And I remember asking her why. And she said that she didn't feel safe, so that she had the umbrella. This was a woman probably in her seventies and so that therefore she would be able to defend herself. You're there every day. Do you, is that a common or uncommon story? Or what do you hear from the seniors in terms of where they're?
That's very common. Sorry, yeah, that's very common. I mean, you know, they'll have something because they don't feel safe. And, you know, I think we could all agree, just from my discussions with them, and having just that added police presence, having some sort of, um, you know, public safety, any resources that are visible to to help them feel safer. And this isn't also, it's not just the seniors. I'm talking about the small business owners too. So, you know, it it's everybody. Everybody's being affected, our staff, our volunteers. You know, we do want to see some sort of improvement. And, you know, if that means the lowest hanging group is having more patrols in our Chinatown community, so be it.
Okay, so that leads to my second question. And you expressed that you thought that having a visible public safety presence was important. It's different than we heard from other speakers. Um, and so I'm wondering, you know, if that's really reflective of a lot of the different people and groups that you talk with in Chinatown? And if you think that rather than looking at investing in mental health and addictions and filling the gaps, uh, and that's more important than public safety, do you think it's not an either or and it's an and? Or how how do you look at it and approach that? So what do you think that, you know, other people that you talk to in Chinatown want to see? And and what do you think, do you think that we need both or more of a balance?
Absolutely. I've always called for balance. I've always called for, uh, you know, just even looking at other places. Like, I don't know if you've heard of One Point in New York City and, you know, San Patrino. Like, there are different models and different programs that we can look at that's going to, you know, help improve, like, people on the street. Like, there, there's these wonderful facilities, like, with a garden-like setting, like, we could do this. And, you know, that would probably be another approach that I would like to see the city or the province, um, kind of, uh, uh, take a look at. But, um, I think just immediate, like, of course, we want to get to C, right? A to C. But, you know, we need to combat what's going on right now on the ground. Otherwise, there's not going to be a Chinatown left. And here we are, talking about it ten years later. Let's hope.
Thank you. That's my time. Thanks.
Councilor Swanson.
Yeah, um, thanks, Lorraine. I was wondering if you could clarify your position on harm reduction. Um, are you saying there should be more?
I believe in harm reduction. I, I, I believe in harm reduction because I don't think recovery, um, like, uh, like, abstinence spaces is right for everyone. I've, I've lost friends and, you know, they they failed at it, right? So, you know, harm reduction probably would have, would have saved them at the time. But I do believe, you know, One Point, New York, like, that's a great example. Like, we, not everybody, like, some people need to to take, um, you know, their their dose because they're, they don't feel like, they can't function. Like, I remember at one point I was, you know, it was like you had to kind of be on something to feel normal, right? And, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a very, like, harm reduction, it, it can, it, there are so many, um, aspects of it that we can use and have a balance of offering a treatment model and a harm reduction model. And I just want to have that that opportunity for everybody to choose and not just turn around and have like a needle being shoved in your face or something. Like, you know, we need to kind of look at it from a very multi-pronged approach. And, you know, I'm totally for harm reduction too. Don't get me wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Swanson. Uh, thank you, Speaker. That is, uh, all the questions for you. So I am going to move on to the next, uh, to the next person on the list. Thank you so much for calling in today. Uh, next, we have Speaker number four, Richard Flynn.
Speaker four is not on the line?
Thank you, Clerks. Um, next, we have Speaker five, Kathy, Catherine Alenzy.
Uh, no, Speaker five is not on the line either.
Thank you very much. Speaker number six is, uh, Manachi Menno.
Hello.
Hi there. Uh, thanks for calling in. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you so much. So. Manachi, I'm presenting this afternoon on behalf of Pivot Legal Society. And I note that this meeting was designed to hear perspective, concerns and recommendations related to public safety and violent crime in the city of Vancouver. I want to begin by acknowledging that since I first signed up to speak, two people have been killed by the VPD. First, someone in my neighborhood of Commercial Drive. And just last week, someone at the Patricia Hotel in the downtown east side. While very little information is publicly available at this time, I have learned that the Commercial Drive resident was a forty-year-old indigenous man and presumably the person at the Patricia was a downtown east side resident. A number of my friends, colleagues and peers live in these neighborhoods, buildings and communities. And regardless of political affiliation, it's obvious that when police resort to escalating lethal force, there have been policy and structural failures. I also want to acknowledge Chester, Wendy and several unknown unnamed people who have been killed by the VPD since 2020 alone. I only know these names because of community safety investigations and not due to any effort by the police or IIO to ensure affected community members received proper care or support. When council first heard from speakers on April twenty-eighth and again this afternoon, it's clear that the commentary is riddled with stigma. Um, and that's also clear in the way that speakers were prioritized for, um, this meeting with lettered speakers predominantly representing BIAs and community policing centers and folks like myself going through the regular signup channel. So while council deliberates and strategizes supposed crime rates, I do want to highlight recent commentary from SFU criminologist Dr. Martin Anderson, who reviewed VPD data, found that there is not evidence of a significant spike in violent crime in the city. And instead, Dr. Anderson pointed to VPD press releases and social media to emphasize random acts of violence. Similarly, I believe that the agenda behind this meeting also lacks the basis and evidence and is designed to cater to anti-poor, anti-harm reduction agendas that have become increasingly prevalent. I can tell you that I see the VPD in my neighborhood constantly and I don't feel safer. I've been accosted with my partner. We're both queer and, you know, small people, read as non-men. And I've witnessed them arresting indigenous women. Um, I've also witnessed them come to calls in a very escalated manner, again, attending a home of indigenous people. And I have to emphasize that these aren't de-escalating or safety initiatives. They're acts of intimidation that Black, Indigenous and racialized people must contend with whenever interacting with police. Um, I also see a perception that people like myself who advocate for defunding VPD are opposed to safety. And that couldn't be further from the truth. I'm profoundly interested in the safety of myself, my family, my community, and that includes unhoused community members who rely on public space. If we want to address public safety, let's address the violence of structural racism and settler colonialism that's leading to disproportionate homelessness of Indigenous and Black people. Let's address the toxic drug supply, which has killed over ten thousand people since 2016. Instead, oh, I cut him off.
No, 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 keep going, please.
Oh, okay. Um, so instead, we're focusing on frivolous and ineffective public policy mechanisms like CCTV and consulting BIAs and community policing center and trespass prevention programs and neighborhood response teams. And these interventions reflect a loyalty to certain parts of Vancouver. But I'd invite council to look at the findings of the 2021 People's Budget organized by the Defense Support Network, which surveyed over seven hundred people. I'd also invite council to review the recent report that Pivot released on the use of street sweeps, which includes seven recommendations directed to the city. And I think that we can actually build up equity and address social determinants of health in order to actually create community safety. Calls to increase policing, police budgets, police technologies or police partnerships don't build community safety. They erode dignity, health and wellbeing. So I want to close by acknowledging the city staff and council members who actually reached out to me and proactively shared info about tonight's meeting. Um, it's not lost on me, as a woman of color who worked explicitly in the area of police accountability, that I didn't receive the same inclusion on a previous agenda that was prepared by city staff. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks so much. Uh, you do have questions, Councilor Swanson? Up to three minutes.
Yeah, thanks so much, Manachi, for coming to speak. Um, I wonder if you could, um, explain two things. First is, what do you think would make communities safer? And the second thing is, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about what's happening in Amsterdam?
Hmm, yeah, thanks for those two questions, Councilor Swanson. Um, I mentioned Amsterdam last time I spoke to council because I feel really inspired by what they're doing. They're actually giving funding to local community groups to oust tourist businesses or businesses that don't actually cater to local communities. And I do hear what business representatives are saying about, um, you know, this kind of deserted commercial area, whether it's in Chinatown or, um, downtown south. And I think that what we see is like businesses and operations that just don't reflect the needs of communities. So it would be frankly inspiring to see the city actually give grants and funding to community groups to develop and revitalize those commercial spaces, those retail spaces, so that they actually meet the needs of the people who live here. And that always, always includes unhoused and homeless people who don't have access to a lot of amenities that folks like myself might take for granted.
That's great. And then what what other things you, can you think of that would make communities safer?
Well, I know that there's been a big emphasis on Chinatown and the downtown east side, um, as these are highly politicized neighborhoods. And I think the number one safety recommendation that I have for council right now is to end the practice of street sweeps, which is displacing people on a daily and sometimes hourly basis. And I think that it generates, um, a feeling of indignity, unhappiness, loss, constantly navigating survival and accumulating personal possessions. And I really do hope that city council will actually review Pivot's recommendations. And thank you to Councilor Swanson, who did attend the launch and who heard from folks who have been working on these issues of street sweeps. But that's my foremost safety recommendation right now.
Do you think the city should settle aside some spaces in the downtown east side where it's legal for homeless people to be? With washrooms and?
I don't think there should be, yeah. I don't think there should be anywhere in the city where it's not legal for homeless people to exist.
That's a good answer. Okay, thank you, dear.
Thank you, Councilor Swanson.
Thanks. Uh, that is it for questions for you. Thank you so much for, uh, calling in and the work that you do for the city. Um, we have on to Speaker number seven now is, uh, uh, Miriam Amadi.
Hello?
Hi there. You have up to five, yes, I can, up to five minutes, please.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, I'm on the line. People are having a technical difficulty. Just one moment.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Hello?
Hi there. Can you hear us now?
Just one moment, please. Oh, okay, sorry. Um, I don't know if one, I have to talk, sorry. So, and don't worry, as soon as you hear the mayor's voice, you can go ahead and speak. I think the line may have dropped on their end, so they're going to call back in. Okay. No worries. Thank you.
We can hear you now. Uh, are you ready to go?
Um, Mayor Stewart, we'll just take a moment to see what the technical difficulty is. They don't seem to be able to hear us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kirsty, I've dialed back into the telesline. Are you able to hear us?
Hi, Rowena, yes, I can hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, are we ready to go, Speaker?
Um, yes, do you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Wonderful. Um, good afternoon, council. Uh, my name is Miriam and I am a West End resident. Um, it is a common understanding in the field of planning and city design that streets account for the majority of public spaces in urban areas. And since we are seemingly on the verge of giving up on our public spaces, I wanted to do a little storytelling of my daily commute in the streets of downtown Vancouver. And what I want to talk about almost negates the quote, eyes on the street, unquote, narrative that everybody keeps talking about and what planners and urban designers have been practicing since Jane Jacobs. We are dealing with a crisis of a different nature. Um, the trouble begins actually the moment that I step outside of my door early in the morning. At first, individuals sleeping at the doorsteps of small businesses on Davie Street didn't bother me, but that was only the beginning. I've been followed, yelled at, insulted and harassed on multiple occasions, early mornings in one of the most populous neighborhoods in the city, a neighborhood with a larger, with a large renter population such as myself. I carry a whistle that I got from a police tent with me. I run sometimes on occasion to escape the situation, but I know how little that is effective in reality. Often, I take Often, I take public transit to work in downtown east side. I was waiting for my bus on Granville Street a couple of weeks ago, when a fellow individual holding a needle approached to stop cursing me for ruining his life, a needle. I don't think I have to explain what that really means. I ran along Granville and took a cab home. Riding the bus is also no pleasure. Watching my fellow citizens, sometimes as young as late teens, barely surviving is very heartbreaking. Um, and it has become more widespread than sort of getting outside of downtown east side. Buses, especially the ones run through downtown east side, are unfortunately getting vandalised a lot more often. I rode a bus about a month ago, when an individual puked in front of me while he was drawing on another seat with a white marker. A couple of days ago, I sat on a bus chair that was urinated on, taking the bus home. It was very disgusting. And this is the public infrastructure that we in Vancouver are most proud of. The bus that I got, that I go to return home, the bus stop that I go to to return home is located on Powell Street, next to a supervised consumption site. The glass pane on the stop shelter was shattered by a fellow individual while I was waiting for my bus. I was traumatised so much that I couldn't go back to work for a week, fearing that it will happen again to me. Isn't this overwhelming that I have to go through this daily just on my commute? Least, but of course, the worst is walking in downtown east side. It is quite apocalyptic in the way that it shows the demise of the city. As a petite minority female, I find it difficult to feel safe. The sidewalks are blocked by the people, and it's filthy with feces, garbage, needles, and stolen objects. I have to walk along the street to take refuge from the sidewalk. That's quite ironic. Also, I found that, um, the only way not to get yelled at is to stare at my shoes, walking, and pretending that I really don't exist. Thinking about the fact that eight females sit in this council, and none really is concerned about the public safety for women blows my mind. I keep journaling my commute and text messages to my partner, fearing that one day something will happen to me for these fair reasons. When I say the "eyes on the street" strategy is not as much relevant anymore, it's because these incidents mostly happen with people around. Coexistence, if we could call it that way, doesn't work anymore. This, this council epitomises misplaced reaction. We are so obsessed with victimising the addicted that are willing to overlook the consequences on the other people that are living in this city. Yeah, please do something for all the residents, and not only a few. Thank you.
Thanks. You do have questions, councillor Dejanova, up to three minutes, please.
Thanks so much, I really appreciate you making the time to, to speak to council today. And just before I ask you a question, I, I just wanted to say that, um, as a woman, and as a city councillor also, um, but personally even, I have concerns about public safety and walking in our city, so I just didn't want you to think that those comments were lost on, on me. Um, I did want to ask you, what is it, you had talked about eyes on the street not working, what do you think we need to do? Do you think that there needs to be a way that we as a council, um, address, you know, some of the mental health and addiction issues that perhaps move into our city when we ask, uh, for housing that isn't as supportive as people with complex care needs require?
Yeah, absolutely. What, what I mean is, we as humans, by just being present at a location, w- will not stop the violence anymore. There needs to be further treatment, there needs to be some sort of, um, consequences for some sort of behaviours. I know that this is mostly a provincial issue, but the city has to be on the side of the people and the residents. It has to resonate with what the people want, not being sort of a burden itself, being a blockhead, and, and, and what the city could get to. And, and I assume the, 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 for, the social housing that is happening around the city is helping. I'm, I'm not really an expert in that field, but what I'm seeing is, the way that the streets are being treated, the public transit is being treated, is just not a place for regular people to be at anymore. There has to be a way to stop that, to minimise the, the, the impact on those facilities and those pieces.
I, I suppose, thank you. I suppose what I'm asking also is, and I understand, you know, policing is, is, uh, the majority of that is provincial, and housing also, provincial and federal, but we here at city council consider rezonings. So, when DC Housing wants to rezone a, a property to make it social housing, we look at the merits of the application. We don't require a certain level of support for particular client groups, especially those with complex care needs. Do you think that we, we are shortchanging people by not doing that and setting them up for failure?
Absolutely.
Do you feel we need to consider that when we consider developments that will house people like that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Definitely. I've been reading about the social housing that's happening, um, and next to the future Arbuta Station, and the amount that people are concerned with the presence, um, of, of those kind of facilities next to children's playing. I personally don't...
We are at the three minutes. Sorry to cut you off, we are at our three minutes. Uh, councillors, if you could just make sure, leave enough time for folks to, uh, reply, that would be appreciated. Uh, thanks, speaker, for participating today, and there are no other questions for you, so I'll move to the next speaker. Thank you. Um, we have Craig James, speaker number eight of sixty-two.
Thank you. My name is Craig James. I live and own a small business on Robson Street in downtown Vancouver. Based on how this whole process has gone so far, I have very little faith that speaking to you will do any good at all, but I don't really know what else to do. Like too many people, for the last year and some, I've been exposed to more needles, human feces, garbage, and people drugged out in front of the parking garage than I could have ever dreamed. Having lived in this same spot for over fifteen years, I can absolutely say that in the area, things are changing for the worse over the last two. I still feel safe enough, but many of my neighbours unfortunately do not. Several have left, some may soon, and others ask me to walk our dogs to go shopping together so they're not alone. But unfortunately, that seems to be the new normal downtown, and that's far from world class. While I appreciate the city and province is trying to tackle homelessness and help those with mental health challenges, the trickle-down effect has led to our local community being terrorised by one individual for months. As someone with OCPD struggling with my mental health issues, I feel for people who have their own difficulties. However, there comes a point when the actions of one can't be more important, and the thousands who are left with little choice but the needles to suffer. These actions should not be allowed to trigger or create new traumas like this situation's doing to me, or do harm to innocent bystanders. As you said before the last meeting, Mr Mayor, everybody deserves to feel safe. As many as five to seven days a week, one to four times a day, from thirty minutes to two hours at a time, as early as five AM, were treated to hysterical outbursts by the same guy that 311, VPP, non-emerge if you can ever get a hold of them, and uniformed officers seen powerless or unwilling to do anything about, despite the aggressive panhandling, disturbing the peace, menacing behaviour, excessive profanity, threats of violence, and the damage to public and private property. Despite the pleas of residents in the area, despite the trespass prevention programme, despite the impact of multiple Robson Street businesses, hotels, and their out-of-town guests, people are afraid it can't continue. He could get food and help from the city, but he prefers to sit in front of Tim, screaming that he's being raped, until someone gives him a donut or a sandwich. But even then, he's only quiet for a few minutes until the screaming begins again. VPDs say Crown Council won't prosecute, and that he's just going to keep coming back, so there isn't anything they can do. Two officers told me that when trying to police situations like this, they often receive so much feedback and blowback from the public, that they're worried about ending up getting trashed on Twitter if a vi- video goes viral, so they just don't get involved. I did send over a video taken prior to the last meeting for you to see what I'm talking about, but due to privacy issues, it won't be played. I was, however, told that I could still play the audio. It will obviously be harder to hear clearly playing it through the phone than if I were there in person, but I think it is still very important. The video is quite straightforward and impactful, but to explain what's happening, so you can hopefully visualise, the first ten seconds is shot from a bit of a distance, and is therefore a bit quieter. He's screaming at the top of his lungs about not having any money. The next portion, filmed closer, showing him, showed him violently throwing his bag and himself around the ground, after a security guard asked him to please stop screaming, and then saying they would have to call the police if he didn't calm down. Most days and episodes are very much like this, if not worse. I will say this audio could be triggering for some, particularly if you suffer from any sensory traumas, so you may want to mute your audio for sixty seconds.
Before you proceed, uh, before you proceed playing the video, uh, the audio, I'm just going to check with the clerks about this, uh, one second, please.
Your clerk was the one who said it was okay in my previous email thread, but just, just for that. Still there? My, forget.
Just a second, speaker, I'm just checking with the clerks, I'll be right back to you, thanks.
Sorry, no problem.
Uh, hi, hi, Mayor. Um, it is okay for the audio to go ahead, as, um, uh, there's, uh, no one can be identified? We've checked through, uh, our privacy and FOI department?
Okay, great, thanks. Go ahead, speaker, and clerk, sorry, my jammer wasn't working, so, um, yeah, please go ahead, speaker, play your audio.
Thank you, I'll start at the beginning again, and I apologise, it's a little bit more difficult than I said here over the phone, but you'll get the message, trust. Imagine hearing that and worse, over and over, day after day, you try sleeping, living, or working from home through that. No one should have to go through what he's going through, but the thousands of people who live, pay taxes, and vote in the area shouldn't have to go through what he's going through either. If he wasn't screaming, it would not be an issue, but it's becoming unbearable. This wouldn't be tolerated long in front of City Hall, or in Point Gray, or in front of your house. The effect can be felt in the neighbourhood even when he's not here. People are traumatised, frustrated, and set up. They can't sleep, some are moving or quitting their jobs, some area residents don't feel safe on the streets when he's around, visitors and tourists are leaving or avoiding businesses they're suffering, and no one will help. Please do something for him, or at least give some actual support to those people who can. Doing nothing almost sends the message that if you have mental health problems, you can do basically anything without fear of repercussion, and scream in the streets till you get whatever you want, and no one will do anything about it. Now, that doesn't make me feel safe.
Thank you so much for, uh, presenting today. Uh, you do have questions from councillor Dejanova, go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks very much for making the time to speak with us and to go back and forth with our clerk to see what, what part of the presentation you could, um, play for us. Can I ask, what, what do you think council can do? What would you like to see us do?
Well, if I don't... If I had the answers, I definitely would have included in that, but I would like to see this individual be helped to the point where he doesn't need to walk through the streets screaming. Whether that means he needs to find a way to be somewhere else to have an outlet, as opposed to walking around the streets, sitting out in front of businesses, holding the area hostage, I don't think that is correct. Whether it's medic- I don't mean institutionalisation or medication, or, I don't think the police need to come and like arrest him either, but he can't be just allowed to walk through the streets screaming, or sit out in front of buildings and apartments for hours screaming. It's traumatizing, it's triggering, it's unbelievable, and I echo some of the sentiments in my last speaker.
Thanks.
And our first speaker.
I, I understand you're talking about this individual, but we've heard many stories about other individuals, or several individuals. Do you feel that when we consider new housing in the city of Vancouver, that there needs to be a minimum level of support for people with issues such as this individual that you're speaking of?
I, I do think the consideration needs to be paid to how the impact of facilities like this will, uh, affect neighbours. I have noticed a correlation in the last two years with the influx of housing, uh, being provided in the downtown area, as I'm only a couple of blocks from Granville Street. It is, as I said at the beginning, a big change in the last two years. It is, uh, much less comfortable downtown, it's dirtier, it feels unsafer, it's just, it's not a place to be. Friends and family don't want to come visit, and I feel it's all based on the fact, and it all started when the last two years or so, once the housing project started in the downtown area to sort of give some people some space. Now, I realise, they should have some space, but their impact is impacting the rest of us.
So, I, I hear your frustration, and I have forty-five seconds left. I don't hear you saying that you don't want social housing in your neighbourhood, but that this is, is concerning, it's infringing on your rights and your ability to walk down your street. So, if there was adequate supports for people who had mental health issues, addiction issues, um, had those supports and that support team, would you be supportive of that? Would you think that that would help with the issues that you're experiencing in your neighbourhood?
I do think that it would be of assistance to people, but I also do think the impact, uh, the, the voices of the neighbours need to be much more considered, because we're the ones who have to live through decisions that other people who don't live here make.
So, we shouldn't make a decision to put more housing in, is what you're saying, unless those supports are there?
Yeah, unless there's support from the neighbourhood, I don't think we need more of it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for, uh, questions, you, speaker, thanks so much for, uh, calling in today, and we're going to move to the next speaker. Thank you, uh, we have Kit Rothschild, speaker number nine.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Can, up to five minutes, please.
Fabulous, um, thanks so much. I want to start by acknowledging that I'm an uninvited settler on the Territories of the Muckwem, Swamish, and Stilwetu peoples. I'm queer, disabled, non-binary Jewish, and a former sex worker. I'm speaking to you today as the Community Code of Director at PACE Society, which is a bi-within-for sex workers' rights and advocacy, education, and support organisation in the downtown east side that serves sex workers of all genders. I want to thank council for hearing me today and for your ongoing support of the work that PACE does. But please allow me to begin by saying that I want to acknowledge the extreme distaste I have felt for the fact that council has prioritised community policing centres and business associations, business improvement associations, pardon me, overhearing from the public on this issue. This, while cops have killed two people in two weeks in Vancouver. It hurts my heart and my brain that some people care so much more about tents in the street or visible drug use than they do about the root causes of homelessness or addiction. I don't understand how people can be quite so numb to human suffering. Unfortunately, between the platforming of businesses that seem to be so enraged about feces and the VPD's expanded trespassing prevention programme, it has become really crystal clear that in Vancouver, businesses are seen as more important than human beings. Their tax dollars are more important, and their voices are more important, and they shouldn't be, because protecting private property isn't public safety. In a recent internal survey of seventy-five members at PACE, we found that seventy percent of the members polled do not feel safer with a police presence while they try to work. Eighty-four percent found that during interactions with police, police were disrespectful to them. And fifty-seven percent of people who reported harms related to their work found police to be unhelpful or very unhelpful. Twenty-five percent, they would not report to police in the future. To us, public safety means acknowledging and unravelling systemic racism, colonialism, and poverty. It means acknowledging that police aren't safe for drug users, sex workers, Black Indigenous, or persons of colour, and Two-Spirit LGBTQ folks. I think public safety isn't defined by how often someone commits a crime, or how many times they are arrested, but how we address justice for the most marginalised. It involves acknowledging that graffiti isn't the worst problem in this city. It's about protecting people like Chelsea Porman and Ben Matson, and the two people killed in the last two weeks. It's about safe consumption sites, and safer housing, and mental health care. To us, people include marginalised people. And if public safety doesn't include the people who are murdered by police, or who are missing and ignored, then it's not really public safety. You're just lapping a kinder name on a practice that is continuing to do what it has always done, what it was created to do, to protect property and property owners, and to police and oppress the rest of us. Instead, I think many of the following things could be considered public safety: expanding safe supply immediately, providing safe and affordable housing, mental health support, providing primary care physicians, providing mail service, providing affordable access to, and accessible transportation, providing interpreters for ASL, and a myriad of other languages for folks in the downtown east side. Investing in public space and in community centres, and in places where people can meaningfully spend their time and not be pushed out of doorways. It means providing more public bathrooms and investing in grassroots projects, and certainly it involves investing in alternatives to 911 and to the police. In closing, I'd like to echo the calls of the Defund 604 People's Budget, which are peer-led, non-violent, non-complexed, 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 peer-led, nonviolent, mental health care, certain mental health services, pardon me, supports and wellness checks, accessible, non-market housing, and the displacement of houseless people, peer-led indoor sex worker spaces, peer-led access to safe drug supply, land back in a traditional healing center at Crab Park, and participatory budgeting. Thanks once again to council for hearing me today.
Thank you for calling in today. You do have questions from Counselors Watson.
Thanks so much for coming in, Kit. I wonder if you could just expand a little bit on what you think the city should be doing, and maybe also tell us what you think about the Police Reform Act recommendations.
Oh, let me start with the last one. Thanks for asking. I think the recent special committee report on reforming the Police Act that called for decolonizing police and quote-unquote hiring the right people in the right places, to me, really smacks of tokenism and woke-washing. You can't decolonize police. Police were meant to uphold colonialism and private property, and that's about it. And we know that reforms don't work, and they are costly and often a waste of time, where another 10 years goes by, and then we finally get a review, and that takes two years to get a report, and then nothing gets done with that report. Instead, people should be listening to what community is saying, because we aren't asking for more car 87 programs. We're asking for safety that does not rely on police. Many of us don't respect police because they keep killing our community members. And so, any sort of like reform of police in that portion, just like, it's not going to work. There's already tons of police getting paid a great wage, and they aren't doing anything about graffiti, which in my mind is very much not a crime, although it might be seen as public mischief. And I think we really need to be focusing on how we undo some of the harms of colonialism, because that's what's created the sort of nightmare scape that we sometimes have in the downtown east side. And what should the city do? I think the city should prioritize the safety of drug users, of sex workers, of homeless people, of BIPOC people, of queer people, of disabled people. You need to prioritize people, period, not businesses. You need to prioritize renters and not owners. You need to be brave about it, because we need you to be allies in more than just words. We need you to put people on the margins first, not Business Improvement Association.
Okay, thanks so much, Kit. Really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
That's it for questions. Appreciate you calling in today, and now we're going to move to our next speaker. We have Sophia Siddle, Speaker number 11.
Speaker number 11 is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. We have Tony Fung, Speaker number 12. Tony Fung.
No, Speaker 12 is not in the chamber nor on the line.
Thank you very much. We have Speaker number 13, just one name, Maya, Speaker 13, Maya.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. Can we have your last name, please?
I prefer to just keep it up, Maya S.
Okay. Maya S., thank you so much. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Thank you. I don't really have a prepared statement. I originally called in last week to talk about the underreporting, and I saw that it was already mentioned. But I guess what really wasn't mentioned were the reasons for underreporting and who's disproportionately affected by crime and inability to access justice and the repercussions of that. And I think we're really underestimating the scope of the issue, where there's a lot of reporting fatigue and a lot of lost public faith in process, which gets exacerbated when we hear just those comments by some activists or leaders that the city is safer safer than ever, which relied just on reported stats. In particular, I think we're really underestimating the victims of crime who are among the most vulnerable. And that kind of comes from this weird conflation that I see of criminals being homeless people or being representatives of homeless people, when I do think that homeless people are often the most common victim of many of these crimes that just do not get reported. There's a lot of reasons why people underreport, like some of them have been mentioned with the inability to get through with dropped calls. So, like, you know, you see neighbors calling all the time and saying, "I've been on hold for four hours. They won't even send anyone or open a case file." There's also the inaccessibility of the process. There's English language barriers, for sure. I know a lot of people, aunties in Chinatown and within BIPOC communities who don't feel like they can properly communicate when calling into police and feel like they're being told that they're wasting time, and so they don't call in. There's also a lot of people who are racialized may not feel comfortable with police because of experiences where they have called as a victim, and then when police arrived on the scene, they were kind of treated as the perpetrator instead, because of automatic assumptions that were made. If you do get through the process and get police to take it seriously, you go through the really challenging process of, you know, going in, giving a statement, giving like a description if needed, and then finding out that charges get dropped, or like the D.C. prosecutors recommend non-charges. Or like they go through the process, they do get convicted, and then their sentencing is one where they're still back out on the street. And then in that case, you're worried about retaliation, because you have a target on your back, because you might live in that same neighborhood as the person who has victimized you, including violent assault, but you have, because they're still being out there and they've kind of realized that there's no consequence for the crime, you're at a very real risk of being hurt again. And this is especially the case if you're in poverty, if you're on the street, or if you're a very identifiable or visible minority. So, like, thinking about seniors in Chinatown, if you have to walk everywhere because you don't have a car, and you do manage to report someone who has assaulted you and that person is back out on the street, now you're afraid that you're going to be targeted for having snitched on them essentially. And this is exacerbated, especially for homeless people, because you don't have a place where you can necessarily hide after going through the reporting. And then, so basically, there becomes like a misalignment of incentives among people who don't ever see consequences for their actions, especially prolific offenders, and that leads to a lot of fear and trauma and underreporting by people who are particularly vulnerable. There's been a lot of focus on mental health and trauma and the low social determinants of health of chronic offenders, but no attention to the impacts on victims, violence, especially repeat violence. So, like, if you're an ethnic or religious minority, you might have homophobic or anti-religious or anti... or like racist slurs on top of the violence that you're inflicted, and that takes a mental health toll on you. And so, there's a commitment by the city to anti-racism, but nothing's being done on the disproportionate impacts on these particular groups. And the feelings of safety affect your quality of life. Like, I myself, I was a victim of a violent crime when I was a child. Person who did it had a history of that sort of thing. So...
Just take your time. We just...
Sorry.
Hope you're doing okay there. If you wanted to take a break, we could have you come back, or you have about a minute left?
No, I can continue. So, like, I went to the process, I reported to police, gave a statement. They didn't even call my parents initially, and then nothing happened. That person was still out. I saw them years later, because, you know, they had a lot of hardship in their life. And so, I guess I don't know if they just like were found not to be responsible for their actions and/or because of the traumas that they had experienced growing up, they, you know, were deemed not to require custody, but like, no one considered the impacts on me, right? Like, I had to, for 20 years, I've had to live with the effects of that. I, you know, I had to go to a pelvic physio, you know, at the 12-year-old. It's very traumatizing. It's...
Again, I'm so sorry to hear about this and appreciate how difficult it is to share in this space. You do have questions from a couple of counselors. Are you feeling okay to respond to those questions?
Yes, I'm really sorry. I am, yeah.
No, we're sorry for what's happened to you, and appreciate you sharing and understand it's very difficult. Counselor DeGenova, we have up to three minutes.
First of all, Maya, I just wanted to say you have nothing to be sorry for, and thank you for being so courageous and brave in sharing your story with us. If I ask you anything you don't want to answer, please don't answer it, and I'm going to try and be as sensitive as possible. In sharing your story with us and talking about, you know, being traumatized and being the victim of crime and having that inflicted on you by maybe an individual or individuals who also would be considered to be in vulnerable and marginalized groups, can I ask you that you had talked about the trauma that is left with you? I'm trying to be high-level here. But when you signed up to speak, you didn't want to give your last name. You also had noted that there are people who are out there who get very upset when other people speak their truths about the violence that has happened to them. And I'm wondering if you feel that this is a safe space, or if you didn't feel that you'd be safe if you had to give your full name, speaking here today?
I mean, I think a part of it is just stigma of sexual assault, especially as a child, regardless of the subject matter. It's still something I'm, like, I'm aware. Like, obviously, as a kid, I had, you know, faults in it, but it's just, you know, I don't want people to Google my name and then see this, and then that's the first thing they read about me. So, it's not necessarily my perspective. Like, the need for privacy for me is more just that's the criminal part of my...
I appreciate that. I appreciate that so much, and thank you for sharing that answer with us. Can I ask you, where we're sitting right now, what would you ask council to do? What would make you feel safer in your city? And, you know, safer considering the trauma that you've, that's informed your experience, but also how you feel today in Vancouver?
So, I don't feel safe in Vancouver. I've moved probably five times in the last two years. Part of that is parts of the city I lived in. Like, I didn't feel like I could walk by myself at night, like, as a result of what I went through. I am hyper vigilant. I do think I'm a lot more anxious than most people are, but I have had other cases where, you know, someone has made a very sudden movement towards me or has, like, said something hateful to me as I've been walking past, and that kicks in the hyper vigilance into gear, I guess, as I'm walking, in terms of what city can do. I think, I mean, there's a lot of things that you guys are considering, like surveillance and police presence and that sort of thing. And I guess what I want to say is that for some people who are underreporting, that might not actually get to the real issue. Like, if your fear is, like, if you've been through an experience and nothing happened to the person who did the thing to you, having more police isn't going to make you want to go through the process again, because in the end, it was, in my case, it was the court that kind of decided that. And so, a lot of people, I think, don't even bother to engage with police, because it just feels like it's a traumatizing process, and it feels futile in the end. And so, I don't know if it's a matter of, you know, when you're dealing with upper levels of government, kind of communicating that to people, that like, people are losing faith in the ability to be protected when they go for it. And then with retaliation in particular, like, that makes it even harder. Like, if you're, and like, I was, I spent a period of time where I was on the street when I was in my early twenties. And even within shelters, if you, if someone steals your stuff or threatens you, there's nothing people do about it, so you don't report. So, it's like, the fear of retaliation is a big driver.
That's my time, Maya, but I really want to thank you for coming to speak to us today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no other questions from counselors, so again, want to thank you for sharing your truth today, and take care of yourself. I really appreciate your input here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Council, we're on to Speaker number 14, Sean Patrick Finnan.
Speaker 14's not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. Next, we have Karen Finnan.
Yes, I'm on the line.
Yeah, thanks so much. You have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. I'm a founding member of the Kitsellano Coalition. We're a grassroots movement of local businesses, strata councils, tenants, homeowners, seniors, and parents of schoolchildren who have joined forces to speak with a common voice on issues of importance to our community. The Kitsellano Coalition stands firmly behind the hard-working men and women of the Vancouver Police Department. But I can tell you that the perception of many in the community is that the city of Vancouver has been treating the police as an opponent or a nuisance, rather than a partner in tackling the surge in crime, to the point that the city has actually proposed cuts to the public safety budget. We know from FOI requests that the VPD was not consulted when supportive housing projects are proposed, despite the fact that the city expects the VPD to respond to the problems that arise at these projects. With the current policy of dispersing supportive housing to every corner of the city, police resources are being spread thinner and thinner, in complete disregard for concerns raised by the VPD. This results in longer wait times for police to arrive and increased numbers of calls that simply can't be answered. This puts the public at an elevated risk of being victimized by crimes for which no suspect is ever apprehended. Mental illness is a common thread through the random stranger attacks that are plaguing our city. People with sound mental health don't sucker punch visually impaired seniors in crosswalks or chase women down the sidewalk, brandishing shards of broken glass. Advocates for the homeless estimate that at least 50% of the homeless of Vancouver suffer from mental illness. Deputy Chief Chow of the VPD has recently stated that 84% of police calls that involve mental illness involve danger, violence, or criminality. Yet, the city and the province continue to push for the warehousing of large numbers of the mentally ill or addicted together in one building. Persons with mental health challenges or addiction cannot be expected to spontaneously heal themselves. Stacking these helpless individuals in single-room apartments and towers with many others with untreated mental health challenges and addictions is a recipe for conflict and violence. People are victimized in these projects by others who have mental health or addiction issues. The current provincial and city policy of housing the homeless in the tall towers also has the effect of marking the residents for victimization by criminals living outside the projects. It's equivalent to putting a bat signal on top of the project to help drug dealers and other thugs spot where to find large numbers of vulnerable people to victimize, one-stop shopping for the underworld. Putting supportive housing projects adjacent to transit stations compounds the problem by providing rapid access and escape by the victimizers, making effective policing impossible. Mental illness and addiction are significant root causes of crime and have to be tackled with a comprehensive strategy for treating the challenges faced by this vulnerable subset of the population, so they don't end up victimizing each other and the communities in which they live. Simply warehousing them together in large congregant settings across the city has the effect of making every neighborhood unsafe. It's just a matter of time before someone gets killed by a person having a bad trip or a mental health breakdown. Why is the city sitting back and waiting for that to happen before stepping back from the failed Housing First model, which has been proven to serve neither the mentally ill nor the communities into which these ill-conceived and poorly executed processes, projects, or thrust? I've heard today Counselor DeGenova asking callers whether supportive housing should not be built unless supportive services are provided. It must be recognized that tenants in supportive housing are not required to take treatment for mental illness or addictions. Providing wraparound services will not ensure that the surrounding neighborhood is safe from individuals who are afflicted by mental illness or addiction. This means that site selection and tenant composition must carefully consider the risks such projects pose to the particular community where the project is proposed, such as the presence of an adjacent school and a playground, rather than focusing on comparatively unimportant issues such as the shadowing that the building will cause. The size of the projects must also be modest to ensure that the community will be able to absorb the impact of the problems that will invariably arise. We have a lot of supportive and social housing in the Kitsellano area, and these projects are small-scale, three to four-story... And these projects are small scale, three to four stories, thirty to forty residents. They blend seamlessly into the community because they are of a small scale and they're manageable. So that's what I'd like to say today. I'm happy to answer any questions that councillors of the mayor may have.
Thanks so much. I'm just checking here. I don't see any questions for you. I just want to say thanks so much for calling in today. And I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker is Cheryl Grant, speaker number sixteen.
Speaker sixteen is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. Uh, the next speaker is Brendan Cudick.
No, speaker seventeen is not on the line.
Thanks. Speaker number eighteen is Wally Wargale.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Wally Wargale, the executive director of the Gastown Business Improvement Society. I've been very privileged for the last year in this role in representing over five hundred businesses in Gastown. I've also had the opportunity to build really solid relationships with some of the residents in this neighborhood and had a chance to talk with tourists who have visited our neighborhood over the course of the last few weeks and can echo many of the things that have been talked about here today, as well as a couple of weeks ago at this special meeting. I don't need to go into the details too much. I think we've all understood where our city currently is at. And the fact that I think we're, reached this kind of pivotal point where our citizens have lost faith in their leaders, municipal, provincial, federal. We've heard all of the things here about the fact that we don't have enough support systems to support the folks that are suffering in our cities. We don't have enough housing. In conversations that we have with some of the folks that do use the streets of Gastown as a place to sleep, many of them don't feel safe in the housing that is available. Multiple times we have heard and have tried with two one one to get shelter space for many of these folks. And we hear time and time again, they do not feel safe there. But yet we continue to build these unsafe places. We, of course, had the tragic incident of the fire of the SRO here in our neighborhood a few weeks back. And in talking with many of the folks who live in those spaces, who manage those spaces, they also say the same thing. These are not the kinds of housing that we need for our citizens. Yet we have a city that continues to protect these spaces. And I think there's just a question is why do we do that? The thing I'm probably most disappointed with, though, is in a year's time, I've had a hundred of these exact types of conversations. I've had it with many of the council. I've had it with many business leaders. I've had it with provincial leaders. We even had a meeting back in November with community leaders about these issues. And a city manager presented to this council a memo on December sixteenth last year that also outlined all these issues. I'm not sure why we have to continually have these conversations, but we continually do and see no real action. The sad part is, if you read that memo, you would see there are a list of action items that were part of the plan to fix some of these issues. And while I've gone through that list and see a couple of those have implemented, we're still far away from some of the major changes that have to happen in order for our streets to feel safe again. And I'm going to just focus on the part that you all actually do have control over, which is the city budget and the city maintenance and the core services that have been lacking for so long. Just in a conversation I had last week with a tourist, she had asked me, like, what happened to Vancouver? This used to be one of our favorite places to visit. And I look at the city and I see garbage bins overflowing, feces all over the place, needles all over the place, streets that are in disrepair, especially in Gastown specifically. Looking at the cobblestones that are missing and asphalt everywhere. Water Street almost impassable by streets, by, by cars on these streets. And we continue for decades to let this decay happen. And this is a national historic site. And it is embarrassing that we have allowed what has happened to this neighborhood to happen. This council has an opportunity to fix that, to right this. We have the capital plan that is happening right now. And I appreciate the fact that we went from zero dollars to six million dollars in that budget. It is not nearly enough to do what is necessary to fix this neighborhood and to bring it back to the gem that it needs to be and should be and the centerpiece of this amazing city. We have a lot of work to do and it has me concerned that that work is not happening. All we're doing is complaining. I'm sick of hearing complaints. I'd like to see some real action happen. We have businesses right now in, in our neighborhood who are considering leaving Vancouver. We've heard countless people here in this meeting and in countless meetings before this residents leaving the neighborhood, leaving the city because they don't feel safe, they don't feel welcome. Now, we're also having these conversations with businesses. One was a movie studio that has now moved some of their production to Toronto because they don't feel like they can, it doesn't make sense for them to build things in their own backyard. It's shameful and it's also hurtful from an economic perspective, but we're going to have a real economic recovery. And for those who think that a broken window or graffiti is a victimless crime, it's not. There are small businesses who are just one window away from going out of business. There is a, a, a lack of real, I think, concentration on some of the root issues here. We brought some of those to the province and we are hoping that they also do their job. We know this isn't just the city's job. It's going to take a coordinated effort. And we really, really hope that we can get moving on this. And finally, I just want to talk about the lack of support services and the lack of housing. There are other alternatives to fixing some of these issues that we see on our streets. I have provided to each of you the work of SFU's Karma Program, that it is time for other alternative methods to be considered. And I encourage this council to have a meeting with Dr. Summers. He is waiting for that phone call so he can talk to you about this program. No one is saying we abolish what's currently in place, even though it is not effective and is not working. And it is time for us to look at alternative ways to hopefully helping these folks and to help our fellow citizens get back on track. And I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Kirby Yang has questions for you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thanks, Wally, for speaking. I have one question for you and just kind of summing it up. You're really saying that if you keep doing what you've always done, you're going to get what you've always gotten. And we're getting more of it. So you're talking fundamentally about a paradigm shift, doing some things differently and having some courage to challenge the status quo of how we've been trying to deal with the issues. Is that a fair takeaway?
Yeah, I think it's, I think that's exactly correct. Uh, I think, you know, when you look at just the Karma Program and, and a year ago, I knew nothing about this. All I knew was, you know, over a decade of being in this neighborhood, I saw a movement from real empathy that this neighborhood had in, in a way of working together with many different socioeconomic groups, moved to a point of apathy because there was just so much decay happening around our streets. And yet we, you know, we continue to do the same things. It's just time to look at some alternative ways to get things done and, and to see a real investment from the city on some of the core services, just the, the, the effect of, you know, having a large enough garbage bins in tourist areas and having lights that work and clean. Those are some of the things that we just, we, we have ability to change today and to make a difference. This whole broken windows theory is true. And if we can do that, I, I would hope that we would see some other changes happen as well.
Okay, thanks. I'll leave it there. We have a lot of speakers, but I appreciate the additional perspective. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for questions. Uh, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks for coming in today. Uh, we have speaker number twenty, Alexandra Tratier.
Speaker twenty is not on the line.
Thanks. Speaker twenty-one, Diane Gillis.
... opportunity to, Cheryl, stick to a couple of points. As public and personal health requires members of the public to advise their doctors of symptoms of illness they might have, so does public and personal safety require members of the public to let police know of incidents or signs of safety being compromised at risk. There has recently been concern raised regarding some British Colombians not having access to family physicians to let them know symptoms of illness. I am concerned that a similar level of concern has not been recognized by those who can address the challenges people in several municipalities are experiencing and have for several years when trying to let people know, police know of suspicious activity and criminal activity that has occurred. Late last month, there was media coverage regarding non-emergency calls to police being abandoned by callers. I was reassured when Vancouver Police Department Chief Palmer said during a TV interview that Vancouver police personnel are not those answering the calls. When people express concerns to me regarding long wait times when calling police with a non-emergency report, causing some people to also express concern with police, I'm sure to share that the calls are not answered by police, um, or police department detachment employees. It is people at ECOM, an agency contracted to take non-emergency and emergency calls for some policing agencies. Last month, I made a non-emergency call to report a drug deal I witnessed in the afternoon. I first called that afternoon, but after waiting on hold, I had to abandon the call as I had an appointment. I called again at ten thirty-two PM that evening. I was on hold until twelve forty-six AM. That's two hours and fourteen minutes. At that time, I did not think there would be many of us trying to report activity such as a drug deal in a quiet residential neighborhood. The license plate I provided was that of a drug dealer known to police. I'm aware of non-emergency calls being answered by ECOM call takers who have declined to take reports. In one case, um, the person that brought this to me, I asked him to call again. Please send me the video surveillance he wanted to provide police. I forwarded surveillance to our Metro Vancouver Transit Police neighborhood officer, who was able to identify the offender on the video surveillance and provide this information to the officer assigned the file after the second call taker to report. Transit police have maintained their in-house call taking, which I, I've not heard any, nor experienced of delays. They also have a text option for reporting, which is also promptly responded to. I'm also aware of nine one one calls on hold when, for example, a woman called as her elderly dad was having chest pain and a retail loss prevention officer and his team were following a man who had taken merchandise of significant value from the store where they were employed. That was a medical emergency and a crime in progress. This, just recently, on a Monday afternoon, I called nine one one as a man who was either suffering a psychotic episode or under the influence of a drug came running and screaming onto our street, hiding briefly behind a car, then running and jumping three feet plus, straight up into the yard, then lying on his back to make a phone call. He hid in foliage in the yard until a car pulled onto the street, ran to get in the passenger seat. The license plate provided to police identified the car as belonging to a woman who had multiple interactions with police due to her suffering with mental illness. Police not only need to have an accessible system through which police can report suspicious and criminal activity, our healthcare system must provide care for those suffering with mental illness and self-medicating or otherwise using illicit drugs. When I started my nurses training fifty years ago, it included caring for and treating those with mental illness. Virtually all the people left the hospital cared to live full lives, not just exist on streets or in parks and self-medicate with illicit drugs to numb the pain of their untreated mental illness. Our current healthcare system abdicating the responsibility of accessible effective care for those suffering with mental illness has caused police, police involvement, though mental illness is not a crime. Optimizing public safety include steps will also stop the misplaced criticism and inappropriate expectations of police. I humbly suggest referencing previous Vancouver mayor Philip Owen's popular strategy, which focused on prevention, harm reduction, treatment and enforcement. And I believe surveillance cameras of public streets would at least assist with prevention, harm reduction, identification of offenders and enforcement. A recent letter in a Vancouver paper included the following query. What are you doing on the street that requires privacy? And in closing, and just quotes Robert Peel, "The police are the people and the people are the police. Please ensure that we can assist police to optimize our own and others' personal and public safety. And please advocate on behalf of those suffering with untreated mental illness and illicit drug use." Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thanks. You do have questions from councillor Dejanova?
Thanks so much for sharing your experience. And that must be really frustrating to call and, you know, dedicate hours to waiting on the phone and then call back and then it takes another two hours waiting on the phone. When Chief Palmer was, was speaking to us, I, he said, you know, regarding crimes being underreported and the issues with ECOM and seventy thousand calls that are abandoned a year, that we can drop crime to zero in the city if we just don't answer the calls. I'm wondering if, if you think maybe when some people suggest crime is down, it's because there are people not reporting crimes for the reasons that you've stated, that they don't have that dedication, they can't take that time away from what they're doing? Or they feel that nothing's going to be dealt with or nothing's going to happen?
Well, as Chief Palmer said, you could go down to zero. I mean, if people cannot report. But the other concern I have is if people can't report early indications or a crime about to take place, it will be worse. And if there isn't, um, the reporting, police can't act. So I think it more enables those who do commit crimes.
Okay, so you think that it actually, um, it emboldens people who are committing these crimes? That they know that police don't have the capacity and that people are going to turn a blind eye if they feel that it's not going to be dealt with?
I'm just saying that, just looking at things logically, if somebody doesn't think anything's going to happen. And as I said, some people have given up calling. I've had businesses say, I can't stay on hold. I've got a business to run. But to think two hours and sixteen minutes in the, like, late, late night, it's an indication. I think those committing crimes probably, you know, they don't see the response. So I would think it would embolden and worsen the level of crime.
So what I think about when you say that, and I'm wondering if, if you'd agree with me, is like, the people that we've heard about that are, you know, committing crime and maybe even in neighborhoods like Chinatown are emboldened then to climb up, you know, on an awning and start sawing down a light or a lamp because, you know, they haven't gone, gotten caught for all of the other things they've done. So now they feel bolder and that they can keep stepping that up. Is that something that you're seeing?
I think, just, yes, I do think it is, um, is contributing to more embolder crime.
Thank you for sharing your experience with us and for speaking to council.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thanks so much. Uh, that is it for questions for you. Thanks very much for participating today in, uh, in this meeting. Council, we have enough time for one more speaker, I think. We have twenty, speaker number twenty-four, Jonathan Morris.
Hello there, Mayor. Hi, can you hear me?
Sure, can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor and council, um, thank you for the opportunity to provide some brief remarks this afternoon at this special council meeting on public safety and violent crime citywide. My name is Johnny Morris. I'm the CEO at the Canadian Mental Health Association's provincial office. And listening in this afternoon is Ruby Ing, who's the CEO for the Canadian Mental Health Association Vancouver Fraser Branch, which serves the residents of Vancouver. Today, I'm joining you from ancestral, unceded and unsurrounded Lakewongan-speaking territories. I've appreciated listening to each of the presentations at the last council session a couple of weeks ago and today. And at the first segment of this meeting two weeks ago, it was reassuring to hear such a strong emphasis from the general manager of arts, culture and community services at the city on the critical importance of taking action on public safety and violent crimes through a social determinants and equity-driven lens. I plan to speak briefly on two issues this afternoon. First, issues related to mental health, mental illness, violence and impacts related to stigma, discrimination and social exclusion. And second, our recent experience developing and launching peer-integrated, peer-led civilian responses to mental health crisis on the North Shore and piloting in New West and Victoria. We've been campaigning to reduce stigma among people living with mental illness since our founding in nineteen fifty-two in B.C. and on diverting people living with mental illness from contact with the criminal justice system for over twenty years. On this first issue, this conversation and response to public safety and violence will continue. Influential leaders and the media can play an important role in challenging stigma and stereotypes about mental illness in the context of this conversation. They can also inadvertently reinforce stigma, stereotypes and the criminalization of people living with mental illness and who use substances. Substantial stigma can be generated and reinforced by very rare, highly shocking and well-publicized. highly shocking, and well-publicized instances of violence by people affected by very serious untreated illness. And it's really important to remember that mental illness does not fully capture the breadth, depth, and types of mental health problems that people experience. In any messaging where there's a threat of mental illness and violence, it's so critical to be specific and to speak only following authoritative confirmation that mental illness or addiction affecters. Messaging that violence in quotes appears to be related to mental illness is not good enough, and frankly fuels stigma and is likely to exacerbate the very problems at the heart of this discussion. It is important to not inadvertently reinforce a link that might not be there, and we must put violence in context. Violence by people living with mental illness is rare, and we must avoid implying people living with particular illnesses are violent. Research shows and has shown for years that most people with mental illness are not violent, and most people who are violent do not have a mental illness. Most people diagnosed with a mental illness are significantly more likely to be victims rather than the perpetrators of violence. And when people with mental illness are violent, there are often other systemic and social factors involved. Finally, there are factors that increment, that can increase the risk of violence amongst everyone, whether or not they have a mental illness or not. These include, um, alcohol use, substance use, a history of trauma, or high availability of firearms or other weapons. On the second issue, at the Canadian Mental Health Association, we respond to the experiences of people in crisis on a daily basis, and we hear their calls for how things need to change when it comes to crisis care. We know individuals, families, and communities need care, compassion, and support, and we know people want to maintain their dignity and autonomy in a crisis. A few weeks ago, the province announced a one-point-two-six million dollar investment to develop, launch, and expand civilian-led, peer-assisted care teams on the North Shore, Victoria, and in New Westminster. And this investment takes us all a step closer to a scenario where more families or individuals in crisis can request a community and health response to offer help and hope. Response teams include a mental health professional and a peer support worker responding in person, by phone, or by text. They do not include police representatives as part of the response. They are not dispatched by police, and they are different and additive to the joint response models outlined by Chief Palmer at the last meeting. Those in the North Shore, where we have a live pilot, are currently helped in English and Farsi. And that team has taken close to three hundred calls where they've been able to divert from the emergency department and from police during the majority of those contacts. Our recent work and the province's investment aligns well with the comprehensive and responsive recommendations, including in the Special Committee on Reforming the Police Act report recently released. And we're also grateful and looking forward to the opportunity to contribute our learnings with these packed, peer-assisted teams as part of our involvement at the City of Vancouver's Alternatives to Nine-One-One Working Group. We're very grateful to be at that table alongside others. Thank you for the opportunity, mayor and council, to bring you these remarks this afternoon.
Thank you. You do have a number of questions. Um, council, we're not gonna be able to get those all in unless we have a motion to extend. Anybody wanna do that?
Second, councillor Dejanova.
So moved, but Dominado.
Okay, all in favor, yea.
Yea.
Uh, opposed, nay. Great, we're extended to finish the speakers. Uh, councillor Dominado, up to three minutes.
Thanks, mayor. Uh, thanks, Johnny, for calling in today. Um, I, you really hit on something that, um, I, I think a lot of people are wrestling with is, is the conflating of the issues around mental illness and addictions and violence. Um, you touched on that. How, could you expand on that? And how do we have a conversation about these issues and not conflating them, as you point out? And, and speaking from experience, if my mother-in-law is, is sitting in a psychiatric ward at this time and is not a violent person, um, could you comment on that and, and how we have these conversations?
Yes, I mean, um, I live with a mental illness and I'm not violent. Um, I have, um, people in my workplace who live with mental illnesses are not violent. And so it's, it's the precision of, of how we use language, um, in and around describing, um, these incidents and, and recognizing that mental illness is a catch-all, uh, doesn't describe the experience of everyone. And we have to avoid the fallback strategy of trying to understand incomprehensible things, awful things, with profound impact upon, um, people as the result of other mental illness. Um, sometimes violence happens because violence happens and there's no root, um, at the cause of that related to, to a mental illness of any kind. So my advice would be first to be used precision. Um, you know, I've seen, I've seen social media posts that describe, um, unprovoked stranger attacks appearing to be related to mental illness. And appearing is not good enough. If, if there are confirmed authoritative claims that mental illness, untreated mental illness was absolutely a driver, yes, we need to, we need to investigate that and, and make that claim. But without that authoritative claim, uh, we really do risk setting back the movement of reducing stigma significantly, councillor Dominado.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate that. And, and just, uh, 'cause I won't have a lot of time, a very specific question. With the, um, pilots that you've undertaken on the North Shore and in Victoria, is the province funding those? Is that a partnership? How is that working from a, a funding standpoint?
Yes, the funding's received from central treasury out of central government, so it's, it's not intruding upon any municipal budget. Um, and so it's come, it, it was, it came out of this last budget, Budget Twenty-Two, a distinct amount to pilot, um, expansion and development of new teams across those five municipalities, um, really to build the business case this year. And we receive continued interest from municipalities along the way. We're very grateful for municipal leadership. The City of New West and the City of Victoria are just two examples that come to mind. Got good support on the North Shore too, where they really, um, also kicked in their own support um, in staff time and, and collaboration. But the actual investment that was announced a few weeks ago is, is net new money from the provincial budget council.
Thank you. I really appreciate you, uh, calling in today. Thank you. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor Boyle, up to three.
Thanks so much. Um, I, I had similar questions to councillor Dominado, so appreciate her, uh, going first and, and you making the time to call in. I'm, I'm interested also to hear a bit more about the pilots. The city launched a Better Together Peer, uh, Response Pilot in the city. Have you and your team been involved in that?
Um, thank you, councillor, for your question. No, we're very mindful and respectful. It's, um, there's, um, some grassroots, peer-led work happening in, in the city of Vancouver that, that we really want to learn from and, and engage with, often very peer-led. And we've heard of some really important examples, um, within the context of the downtown east side. Um, that particular peer work, councillor, we're not involved with. But I imagine, given our invitation and participation at the Alternatives to Nine-One-One Working Group that the city's, um, created, um, we'll be able to leverage and learn. There's interest, I think, in getting it right and doing it well in these other municipalities. And, and, but we're very interested in sharing what we learn, uh, with City of, uh, Vancouver elected officials and also staff as we move forward.
Okay, thanks. And I'm curious, in the pilots that you've started, my understanding is there's a separate phone number that can be called to access them. Are they also calls that are being diverted through nine-one-one to those, uh, pilot services?
Um, an excellent question. On the North Shore, it's, it's a direct access point currently through the Canadian Mental Health Association's North and West Vancouver branch. Um, and so it's not routed through the ECOM system, though there, there are conversations that we recognize that people at times do not feel safe calling nine-one-one for, for any of the responses for a whole host of reasons that council is likely aware of. There is a broad conversation, uh, starting to develop around a, a fourth mental health option. Um, there's a few folks advocating for that, and, and that could become part of the dispatch frame. The City of Toronto have really, I think, figured this out with triage and dispatch in a good way and would invite council to spend some time with City of Toronto staff. They've really done some good thinking there. We're trying to crack that nut here in B.C., just given, um, the role of ECOM call takers and the differences across the way. But what we have learned from people who have experienced challenging interfaces with police is that an array of doors to this service is so critical. Nine-one-one being one door, um, and then other doors, uh, where a community agency does its own dispatch, is also very, very important for, for safety too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, I have one quick question in my last moment, which is we certainly hear, as you noted, a lot of stigmatizing language around mental health. Um, i- if there are particular resources that you recommend even us as council, uh, read in terms of shifting our own language and being able to better correct public language we hear to not, uh, worsen the problem, I, I would, uh, welcome that being circulated to us or, or sent to me, and I can circulate. Thank you for your time.
Um, and yeah, if I may, mayor, yes, we'd be happy to resource you with some. We've been writing about this for a number of years, and it's a very lovely invitation, so we'd be happy to share that with council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks so much for coming in. I've got two questions. One is, um, would the CMA be into working with Vancouver to expand this peer-assisted model here?
Thanks, councillor Swanson. We, we are very, would be very interested. We, we've had, um, I think, um, mixed feedback along the way around, just given the diversity and complexity, um, and the, the magnitude of the city, um, how it might work. But the City of Toronto's figured this out. I think there's lots to learn there. They've recently launched four teams, including an indigenous-led team in the City of Toronto. Um, there's real openness from the provincial office at CMHA to engage with city staff and council on what might be possible. I think proving us out this year in New West, the North Shore, and Victoria will be key to see how this works in the ecosystem of the province. Um, but councillor Swanson, we, we very interested in sharing all that we can learn this year with the City of Vancouver, um, and, and also being very, very respectful of grassroots efforts that are currently underway.
Okay, thanks. The other question I have is about the stigmatizing that you were talking about. We get lots of emails, and they're speakers too, from folks who say things like, "We can't have supportive housing that houses people with mental illness and people who use drugs because it's close to children." So there's the stigmatizing assumption there that if you need supportive housing, that you're dangerous to children. And I'm just, keep struggling with how to intervene in that or how to, how to, uh, try and point out in a way that people can hear that they are being stigmatizing. Do you have any ideas?
Yes, I mean, we've struggled with this too over the years. On the one hand, really holding, um, the impact of, of certain things that happen in community upon residency. We do hold that and respect that. And remembering ultimately, we are talking about human beings living with health conditions that lead to profound distress. And for the person experiencing that, um, we, I mean, we typically center pathology and problems in people. And we've done that for years, and we continue to criminalize folks. And, and I think rather than be hard on the people, um, and a number of speakers have said this, let's be hard on the system and the, the social context that contributes to these challenges. And that's big order work, right? Um, but I think if we always remember, we're talking about human beings, and what we have seen is just a consistent over many decades, irrespective of, of political party, um, under investment in community-based mental health care, we, we need to make sure we don't suffer from a lack of imagination and creativity and care when it comes to responding to these complexities. And, and it is, I think, remembering, I live with a mental illness, and councillor Dominado's spoken about her family experience. Uh, we are talking about people, and people in distress, and, um, and institutionalization doesn't work. We've, we've seen that fail. So how do we realize the full imagination of what we need in community and, and also push back on stigma, which ultimately quartz our efforts to get care at the right time to people in need of that care?
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dejanova? The last question?
Thanks so much. Really appreciate you spending the time speaking with us. Um, last, um, last week, we heard from Dr. J.J. Sidhu from Vancouver Coastal Health, um, when he presented, and he said that, that Vancouver Coastal Health, that he canvassed his nurses', mental health workers', that they couldn't do their work without the VPD. So I'm just wondering if you have any comments on the VPD's program and their approach with mental health? And how does it compare to other places? Because what I'm hearing is you're working with other places to fill gaps. But I'm trying to understand where it is you and your organization thinks we fall, sort of if, in comparison to other municipalities?
Well, thanks, thanks for your question. Um, I, I would be the first to say that we would be, as an, we're, as an agency, we are incredibly distressed and concerned, um, when, when anyone is injured or killed during an interaction. And, and there have been a, a number of interactions over the years where, where police, not just VPD, but across the province and the country. And we need, we need to course correct on that and make sure we get to zero in all of those instances. And, and that really does require, um, a reduction in the number of contacts where police are called upon to people in distress. And we see in Sweden, you know, they dispatch a mental health ambulance, and, and they've, they've had to rely upon police, um, minimally in cahoots and, and elsewhere. And so we do need to swing that pendulum back. Um, and we recognize that Vancouver police, and not only them, but other police departments, are part currently of a continuum of care. And, and our argument is, let's, um, let's build up the toolbox along that continuum of care so that we, we can reduce reliance upon sending, um, a police response to health emergencies. The number of cases we hear where police have had to respond to someone experiencing a panic attack, um, someone who's experiencing thoughts of suicide because they're depressed, including people hearing voices, all of those pieces, we need to reorient the system fundamentally. And we're trying to beef up the part of the system with civilian-led, peer-led responses, where we rely on police less and can free police up to attend to their mandated response.
I understand that. I, I'm sorry, I just have very little time left. So I'm wondering, I mean, but where do we fall currently on having those sort of de-escalated responses compared to other municipalities? What's your opinion, your organization's opinion, with our programs with VPD?
Well, I would say, um, the availability of resources in Vancouver contrasts with rural and remote parts of B.C. I think it's, it's on a par with what we have in Victoria, where there's quite a lot of emphasis on joint response to the CAR eighty-seven model. Um, so I think you, you stack comparably with Victoria, um, and then also police go alone to responses. Uh, we would like to see a world where, where police respond alone much less to mental health emergencies, um, joint response where it's needed and required, but where we really ramp up civilian and peer-led where we can. So I'd say you're comparable to, to Victoria. But my last comment, mayor and council, um, last, two weeks ago, Mayor Eric Adams, the new mayor of New York, invested fifty-five million dollars in non-police-driven behavioral health teams. Um, city staff asked for about sixty-one million, and he came in at fifty-five million. I think as a bold statement that civilian health and social responses can really swing that pendulum from relying upon police as the default mental health responder in the province, which I think all of us want to move away from.
Thank you so much, uh, for your time today. I don't see any other questions, but really appreciate your, uh, contribution. Thanks again.
Thank you so much, mayor and council.
Thanks, council. Uh, so we're at five oh six, council. We'll come back at, uh, say, uh, six-ten to, um, to, uh, continue with hearing speakers. Thank you so much, and we'll see you at six-ten.
Hi Kirsty, it's Rowena. Are you able to hear me? Hi Kirsty, it's Rowena. Are you able to hear me?
Hi Rowena, I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you very much. I'm gonna keep you muted until we get underway, okay?
Okay perfect, thank you.
I can't have to leave it on though.
We're ready to go.
Great, thanks, Council. So we are on speaker number twenty five, who is Curtis Robinson? Curtis Robinson, speaker number twenty five.
Speaker twenty five is not on the line.
Thank you, Clerks. We have Eric Herson, speaker number twenty six.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I just want to acknowledge that we're sitting on the ceded territory of the foreign owned condo. Second, I just want to talk about the the inaction and the excuses and the denial of a lot of members of council regarding crime. And a lot of the crime that's committed in the city is committed against vulnerable people. And I'm just curious how they how they square the circle of having crime committed against vulnerable people and the inaction that they've had in this regard. Who are they protecting by having high crime? There's no doubt the city is has a crime problem and there's no doubt that the city is not safe. So who wins in this scenario? Is it the criminals? Is it the victims? Who are you protecting? And I just wanted to give a list of some of the crimes that I've been a victim of. And this is just normal. Crime is normalized in the city. And we're talking about bike accessory theft. We're talking about assault in Emery Barnes Park. We're talking about my storage locker was broken into. The twenty five hundred dollar bicycle was broken into in the bike cage of the building downtown. Verbal abuse on the bus, slurs, even racial slurs. And this is normal in the city. So every crime is a violation of human rights. And and the city is 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 an ongoing it's an ongoing nemesis and council has to take it seriously, which they haven't. They've been in complete denial. Um, I also want to ask Adam Palmer a question. He often talks about how the judiciary is allowing, you know, repeat offenders out. And and he blames a lot of this on the judiciary. But where is he when it comes to calling out the the John Horgan and Mike Farnwell and David Eby? Where are the action items for those gentlemen? He has a subservient relationship to the to the to the upper echelon of government and it harms the individual. He has to be much more assertive in 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 having action items for public safety. So just a couple more points here. Um, well, that's basically it. Those are my basic points. I just I'm very disgusted as a citizen of Vancouver about, like I said, the inaction, the denial and the excuses by council and the mayor. And one final point is we have to think about who is who is qualified to speak about crime. A lot of you don't have a criminal record. And so you obviously value crime free life, but there's one person on council who does have a criminal record. And I don't think he's particularly qualified to speak about crime. Anyways, that's it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Bye bye.
Thank you for calling in tonight. I don't see any questions for you and I'll just move on to the next speaker. Thank you so much. Speaker number twenty seven is Stephen Han. Stephen Han, speaker number twenty seven.
Speaker twenty seven is not on the line.
Thanks, Clerks. We have speaker number twenty eight, M Wickham. M Wickham?
Yes.
Hi there.
Can you hear me? I have slides.
Okay, Clerks, do you have those?
Yes, we're putting them up right now.
Great. Okay, thanks. I'll wait till the slides are up and then I can start your timer.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, tell me when it's up.
Here they're all ready. Please go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. I'm Marlene from Vancouver. First slide, the palpable letdowns in public safety. To recap, April twenty eighth, Chief Palmer said that no one is in charge of public safety and different government departments are working in silos. BIAs asked, who is going to stop vandalism and random acts of violence? The City Department for Arts and Culture and the Parks Board talked about social determinants of health, place making activities, and their plans for the homeless. Next slide. On May fifth, in response to public concerns, Attorney General David Eby gave his creative solution for repeat offender violent crime, which was a one hundred and twenty day long study to determine compulsory supports and programs that could respond to the unique needs of this group of offenders. In the words of Vaughn Palmer, the letdown was palpable. My response to Honorable David Eby is, one, instead of losing another valuable tourism season due to violent crime, put violent criminals in jail or colony farms for the next one hundred and twenty days and see what happens. Two, it's time to admit that deinstitutionalization of some people with severe mental illness was a failure. The creation of the three complex care model sites is a testament to this failure. Three, the dangerous mental health effects of methamphetamine can no longer be ignored. Next slide. My response to the BIAs, no one is going to save you. Bureaucrats don't seem interested when regular Vancouver residents and neighborhood groups stand up for their interests. BIAs, you have to organize and save yourself. The public will follow. Demand politicians that represent you de-elect the ones that don't. In terms of public safety, the BIAs' interests align with the majority. BIAs promote successful small business and functional, orderly, safe neighborhoods for people to do business in. Violence and vandalism in cities is a Canada-wide problem, and you will find solidarity with other BIAs and citizens at large. Next slide. My response to the city of Vancouver is, one, homelessness is a complex topic deserving its own public forum and housing doesn't deal with violent crime. Homelessness needs its own unique department and not be separated into more silos. Next slide. What does Vancouver plan for? The Vancouver Plan mentions resilience against earthquakes and climate change, but nothing about public safety that we are all concerned about. The Broadway Plan has nothing about public safety. So some cities designed for women, next slide, some for children, next slide, or even use second generation SEPTED to figure out compatible use of land like Saskatoon. Vancouver is into inclusive neighborhoods and put a safe injection site and hotel turned shelter turned SRO beside seniors, families with young children and a toddler park in Yelltown. And fresh from Twitter, the OPS has had its lease extended until twenty twenty four. Talk about incompatible uses of land. And very soon, a terminal subway station and bus loop at Broadway and Arbutus with increased access of drug dealers into the area, plus a one hundred and sixty four foot high low barrier housing supportive of drug use and no criminal background checks beside a women's abstinence-based recovery house, seniors housing, elementary school, and toddler park. This isn't stigmatization. Drug use is not compatible with abstinence-based housing, children and a toddler park. And no parent wants their child to have the devastating experience that our previous speaker Maya had and that and having her trauma outranked by that of a perpetrator. The Honorable David Eby, Attorney General, Minister responsible for housing and local MLA with an abundance of control over and conflicts of interest in this area approves of this inclusive neighborhood plan. Next slide. At present, single-family home areas have the lowest rates of crime. With the plan for densification to rental high rises, there will be a loss of physical connection to the street. With turnover of rental population, there are fewer caring, personally connected eyes on the street. With all the talk of inclusiveness, but a lack of value for what our neighbors think, how does Vancouver plan to facilitate relationship building, cohesion, trust, and safety in Vancouver? Without a competent caring plan involving existing people in our neighborhood, I fear that we are in store for more palpable letdowns in public safety. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have a question from Counselor Harvick? Go ahead, Counselor Harvick, up to three minutes.
Thank you very much. That went by very quickly. I just wanted to confirm that you have shared your slides with and hopefully your remarks with council.
Oh, I didn't. I haven't done a separate submission. I don't know. I don't think I can do another submission through the well, I guess I can use the general form. Sure. I will.
You could just email it to Mayor and Council through our individuals. Anyhow, I'd appreciate it and I'm sure all of council will. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. That is it for questions. Thank you so much for calling in this evening and I'm going to move to the next speaker. We have Shirley, no last name in person, Clerks.
Speaker twenty nine is not in the chamber.
Okay. Thanks so much. I'm going to move on to speaker number thirty, Ronel Samas. Ronel Samas, speaker number thirty.
No, speaker number thirty is not on the line.
Thank you. Speaker number thirty one is Douglas Ferguson.
Hi.
Hi there. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so as mentioned, my name's Douglas Ferguson and I work in Chinatown. I've been working in Chinatown for the past few years, three or four years. I'd like to open up with a quote from from writer C.S. Lewis, who you probably know, written the classic children's book Lion, Witch and the Wardrobe. It goes like this. "We all want progress, but if you're on the wrong road, progress means doing an about turn and walking back to the right road. In that case, the man who turns back soonest is the most progressive." And the reason why I bring this up is because I've noticed, like, you know, since working in Chinatown, how this idea and this sort of fiction that we don't need more police officers has created such a problem with the Chinatown community. I mean, I know I know personally, I would, and I know lots of people within the Chinatown community who would benefit greatly from more police patrolling Chinatown. I go to work there like every morning and, you know, it's it's just a given that I am going to have to deal with, you know, either, you know, human feces or, you know, people barking at passersby, a lot of them seniors, a lot of a lot of Chinese Canadian seniors, may I add. And and I also work right next to a senior's home and it's heartbreaking to see like, you know, to see like say an eighty five year old, you know, Chinese woman with her walker and she has to walk past like, you know, people shooting up and smoking crack or or leaving their, you know, their shopping carts, whatever, on their walkway. So they can't even go down, they can't even use their wheelchair accessible, you know, equipment that's at the building. And it's constant erosion. I mean, my goodness, I'll tell you, like, I remember last year even, like, there was like members of the these seniors, I don't know what group they were, it was like a group of Chinese Canadian seniors and they were all composing and practicing for this Chinese opera. And they were all singing together and they were practicing out in this courtyard. And man, I'm telling you, it broke my heart because while this beautiful, they were singing this beautiful music, there's people like smoking crack and shooting up around them and there's human feces and there's needles and there's like there's garbage everywhere. And I'm just like, how is this progress? This is not progress. And, you know, like somewhere along the line, like, I just feel like everything has just gone way to one side of the debate to the point where it's like it's crazy. We live in like a place that looks like ruins. I remember like, you know, even like going to like, you know, one of the shops there, like at the Dollarama and the woman had been working there for years. She says, you know, the city is trying to make Chinatown, like, this is her, what she said, she goes, the city is like trying to make, you know, Chinatown into crazy town. She has to deal with all this abuse that comes from like, you know, a lot of the people that are like with addiction issues that come in and out. And I remember I'd worked there, like when I used to, when I'd go work there earlier, when the, you know, when the sun would rise, I used to get there early. I would watch a, it was like a migration of people bringing in stolen goods through Chinatown, children's bikes, motorcycles, barbecues into like through Chinatown and then, you know, and then, you know, Chinatown's at risk of getting stolen goods. They'd make their way to the markets on East Hastings. This is crazy. I mean, why is it that the those that work in Chinatown or the residents in Chinatown are have no voice here? It's, we feel like our voices are not being heard. And every day that I go to work is a trauma. It's traumatizing because I'm going to be, if I'm like, oh, excuse me, sir, could you maybe not, you know, you know, shoot up, you know, where I work or whatever, I know that this person is going to get angry at me. me, you know? And, like, even, like, going to McDonald's, like, last month, I went to McDonald's, and this woman whipped out a giant knife that could honestly, it would have sliced a bear, it would have killed a bear. And she started attacking somebody in the McDonald's at the International Mall, and so I immediately just vacated. It was terrifying. I mean, this is, it's like, it's like that movie, like, Escape from New York with Kurt Russell. I mean, this is what's happening. I mean, we need to see more police patrol.
Thank you. You're at your five minutes. Appreciate you calling. I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Thanks so much. Counsel, next speaker is Speaker number 32, Scott Shepherd.
No, not on the line.
Thank you. Speaker 33, Jordan Eng.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, council, council members, city staff, and fellow speakers, this is Jordan Ning. I'm the president of the Vancouver-Chinatown BIA, and I would like to thank city council for convening this meeting as a, on public safety, because, as you've heard from the last speaker, and it's really heartbreaking to listen to him, that safety is a major issue threatening Chinatown. Many of you know and remember Chinatown as a once vibrant neighborhood with curio shops, bustling streets, sights and sounds not found in other parts of the city, an inclusive and diverse neighborhood of rich and poor people, doctors and lawyers, fishmongers and vegetable shopkeepers. And despite the demographic change in the city over the last several decades and the proliferation of other Asian-focused neighborhoods, Chinatown remains a living community of residences and businesses. Uniquely, it's a living room for our elders, our seniors, that have, and it provides them a place of community, familiarity, and a sense of comfort. But over the last two years with COVID, the major concerns continually come back to us, and those are safety and security, anti-Asian racism, social disorder, garbage, and graffiti. And, you know, we've talked to many on council, we've talked to city staff, and the community leaders have gotten together, and what are they telling me? That Chinatown is under siege, health and safety are the most important issues facing Chinatown, and safety and security above all consideration is what's an issue. For our community, the results of social disorder, mental health issues, and aggressive received real on regular folks, that's happening, you know, that's happening on us every day. And how do we measure ourselves and where we become a neighborhood where we can welcome people? Well, if your grandmother, who has worked her whole life quietly contributing to society, helping building the city, is not able to walk down these streets where she calls home, we have a problem. My concern is what is happening on the street is driving away good businesses that create the vibrancy of the neighborhood. It's keeping the locals, visitors, residents, and tourists away because of fear for their safety. And as this accelerates, the retail stores, which are the essence of our neighborhood, will continue to close. We already have the highest retail vacancy in the city, not to mention the city-owned Chinatown Park Gate Plaza. For us at the VCBIA, it is all, we are always committed to working on solutions in collaboration with community groups, our neighbors in the downtown east side, and the city. This neighborhood is too valuable to lose. We have a history longer than the city of Vancouver. I don't want to repeat the statistics provided by Chief Palmer the other day, because we at the ground level feel like we are at ground zero, with much that has been tolerated and not reported. Recognizing that what we experience is no longer just a Chinatown problem, what is extremely troubling, though, in our neighborhood is the anti-Asian racist overtone that shadows this community. But I'm not here just to complain. I want to echo what Chief Palmer said called for, which was a holistic approach, and to pull out all the tools out of his toolbox for solutions. The VPD can't do it alone, but we would like to thank the VPD for its support for the community over the last several years in particular. But there's a need, a parallel need for social support and mental health services, in particular at the end of each month, when it becomes acutely noticeable in the neighborhood. The Attorney General has called for a report on how to creatively deal with repeat offenders. 120 days is a long time to wait for those impacted today. It may be a small step forward, and we ask you also to consider supporting the call for restorative justice. One program that is particularly important to Chinatown, funded through the Chinatown Transformation Team, is the Community Stewardship Program. Funding is scheduled to end at the, stop at the end of this year, and we encourage you to continue, support its continuation. Through this peer-based neighborhood engagement, their work in the community is an important alternative approach and less threatening than interactions with security and VPD. We also ask for more, or increased microcleaning in the neighborhood, streets and sidewalks. We request continued support for feces removal programs, but request more public toilets. We congratulate Engineering for reinstating the outdoor patio program, which had a bit of a hiccup at the start, but we request, we also request more lighting in the streetlight.
Thanks. You are at your, you are at your five minutes, but you have questions. Counsel Kirby Young, up to three minutes, please.
Hi, Jordan. Let me start with, you named, and I really appreciate it, a number of different kind of solutions in addition to the mental health services. So let's start with lighting, because Chinatown has very unique lighting with the Dragon Lights. What kind of lighting are you envisioning in your request to have more in the neighborhood?
Well, as you mentioned, the Dragon Lights are nice and beautiful for the neighborhood. It was a program done by the Vancouver-Chinatown Merchants Association, which represent the legacy businesses, but it doesn't light the streets and the corners, and so it looks dark and allows places for, you know, people to do the vandalism initiative that we've seen in the neighborhood.
Okay. So do you, I mean, is it important that it's, the lighting's unique to the neighborhood, or is it just really about quality lighting that is bright and makes people feel comfortable walking around at this point?
I think it's putting more lighting to make people feel more comfortable in the neighborhood and prevent, as crime prevention as well.
Okay. Moving on to other questions. Do you feel that your concerns are being discounted in favor of the broader social issues right now?
I, you know, I do. I know there's issues on, in the downtown east side in general, and we're supportive of the initiatives on that side, but, you know, there's a level of accountability and issues that need to be dealt with in Chinatown, and, you know, we seem to be the small, just because of our kind of locale and the size of our community, we seem to be passed over when the bigger, broader issues come into play, so.
Okay. You mentioned the Community Stewardship Program and advocated for that. You said it's sort of a softer, gentler way in terms of interacting with people and some of the challenges in the neighborhood. Can you speak a bit more about some of the outcomes of that? Can you describe?
Well, you know, it's, sure, it's, you know, it's a social enterprise program that is run by Embers, which employs people from the downtown east side, and, you know, and have them in the community to interact with people that might otherwise feel threatened by police or security, and it's a less, I guess, how they would consider it, is a less aggressive approach to, to working in the community, and because there were concerns about that.
Okay. But you're seeing positive impacts? Like, what's, is it reducing interaction? Is it helping people to service? Like, what are you seeing as the positive outcome?
It, it's helping people in the community, direct them to services, which may be helpful for them. You know, at times, if they're in front of storefronts, and people want to open their businesses, rather than calling the police, you know, there is an opportunity for them as they're working to help the interaction between the store owner and the person that's, you know, speaking in front of their, in front of their store when they're trying to go to work.
Thanks so much. That, we're just over the three minutes, and on to Counsel Dejanova for the three minutes.
Thanks very much, Jordan. Thanks for waiting to speak to council also. You had mentioned many solutions. I really appreciate that. I've been trying to ask speakers about that tonight, and you already answered one of the questions I had about lighting. But when it comes to investment in Chinatown and looking at sort of what we could do together, I mean, I understand that from a previous motion, that works underway, and staff will be reporting back, but what do you see the critical need being right now for public safety? Are you hearing of people that are scared to come to Chinatown? So, really, the businesses are kind of being led out of, out of any type of base or customers here?
Yeah, you know, I didn't get to finish quite all I wanted to say, but I did want to say that, you know, in the meantime, as we're working solutions, is that, you know, having more foot patrol in our neighborhood and increased police presence in our neighborhood is helpful. You know, there is, whether it's perceived or real, that safety is an issue. And, you know, you can't discredit it because violence hasn't physically happened, you know? And we have a lot of elders, a lot of older Chinese people that come down to Chinatown every day, and in the past with COVID, you know, their kids said, "No, don't go down there," but now they hear the news that it's unsafe. I think just having eyes on the street is really important. And also providing crime prevention tools and merchant engagement for the police, so that, you know, that they can deal with it, you know, so that the merchants take some responsibility about how they handle themselves as well. So I think those are things that are important.
If we have time, can I ask you a bit about, I mean, here's the thing, we started UNESCO pre-COVID. I mean, there's a significant budget there right now for UNESCO. Do you see UNESCO moving forward if we don't deal with the public safety aspects and the anti-Asian hate and racism in Chinatown? Or do you think we need to deal with that, and UNESCO will come? But if we don't deal with that, it doesn't matter what we do for UNESCO. Jordan put you on the spot.
So UNESCO could be a dream in the future, but, you know, it's the issues that we do deal with today. It's ground-level issues. If we don't deal with what we have and the problems that are in the community now, UNESCO, we could be working on something that will never happen. I think we need to deal with what's in front of us right now.
Thanks, Jordan. Really appreciate you making the time to speak to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Dejanova.
Thanks so much. I don't see any other questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker, who's Speaker number 34, Charlene Kettlewell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Five minutes, please.
I'll open by saying I'm a little nervous.
Oh, don't be nervous. Thanks.
I am muted all of this. I'm a mother of four, resident of Vancouver, new to community organizing, and I founded Parents for Thoughtful City Planning, co-founded it with a goal of helping to place children back in the center of decision-making in the city. The city planners can include a child's perspective across all work. You know, a city that is safe and friendly for children, bottom line is a safe and friendly city for all. Tonight's meeting is about making choices about our entire population's safety, but so far, we've been doing all we've been doing. This is without the ideas and experiences of the full community. As children are not only the most vulnerable, they make up over 20% of the population in Vancouver, and over this past year, I've witnessed that our city makes decisions without fully considering their needs. Here are a few examples of what I would suggest is needed. First, safe walking and safe cycling infrastructure, especially around schools. Today, multiple schools have been impacted by major transit projects. Sidewalks removed, detour signage for bike-to-school routes are hung way above children's sightline, and the only safety element between seven-year-olds and buses going 50 kilometers an hour is a faded spray-painted line. This access impairment will impact or prevent five years of commuting by walking or biking for 1,500 schoolchildren in the area of Arbuthnots and Broadway. Second, we need city planners to incorporate feedback from our most vulnerable populations. Recently, FOIs showed that city planners clearly have not incorporated feedback from large populations of children in public housing proposals. Consultation has resulted in success for other jurisdictions. Planners need not think that parents are out to stop proposals. Victoria, for example, worked to achieve balance and success for school communities. They recognized incongruence of existing school-age populations and introduced populations, and responded by establishing housing for only those with no known history of violence and no current substance abuse issues. What did that equal? Success. In North Vancouver, throughout community consultation for another school neighborhood, they determined that housing for the most vulnerable population of women and women-led families would be the most appropriate, so the existing and introduced family populations could thrive together, and the result was an overwhelming support from the community. Third, we need to let current data pertaining to children's families help drive our decisions. The City of Vancouver 2020 Homeless Count showed that more than 21% are identified as women and women-led families. That scan states that 82% of these are turned away from shelters or being sold. In 2019, 25% of women surveyed in the downtown east side, where they felt unsafe in their place of residence, and 87% reported feeling unsafe in the downtown east side, walking around. In 2020, city planners told Atyra Women's Resource Society, who has been advocating for four years for 100 units of safer supportive housing for women and women-led families that it would be too expensive at the site that they proposed downtown, and that they would prefer to develop empty land for their purposes from a cost perspective. Today, you have a case of where empty city lands exist. The data derived needed for supportive housing for women and women-led families in a safer, family-oriented, walkable neighborhood, you have that, and a community that has loudly asked for a composition of families to welcome. However, in this example, city planners ignored, overlooked this data and community feedback and missed the mark on what could have been an incredible good news story for integration, acceptance, and recovery for over 100 women and their families. I encourage all decision-makers to place children at the heart of planning and give explicit consideration to the kind of world that's being created for those children who will be growing up in our city, that it may be livable, accessible, and enjoyable, and is safe for all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Counsel Dejanova has questions. Counsel Dejanova, up to three minutes, please. You're on mute, I think.
Thanks, Mayor. I was double muted. Charlene, I'm hoping you can maybe share a little bit about your own perspective. Do you feel safe in your neighborhood right now? What are you hearing from, you know, your fellow residents? I appreciate the high-level, you know, complexities and some of the solutions you brought to the table, but also just wondering how you're feeling. What's sort of brought you to participate in this meeting?
Well, a year ago, it was brought to my attention that, you know, city planners weren't incorporating family feedback. I found this shocking, abrupt, and I wanted to see if I could make a difference. I don't live too far away from the school where our children attend, and would love them to be taken to school and using their Arbuthnots greenway, and found that as I'm, you know, as I'm trying to transport them there, that we were being abruptly rerouted as the, you know, the chunk of the greenway was cut off. And when I witnessed firsthand, and now stop my car, pull over to try to photograph, you know, some dangerous circumstances, and I'm just, you know, I feel like I'm just, like, banging at a wall, and like, you know, nobody's, yeah, but people never saw the wall. They put the wall up. They don't, with sound, you know, soundproofing, and they don't want to hear us. They don't want to see, come down to see the site, to under, you know, to see firsthand, you know, how the community, and it's not just one school that's being impacted, it's six. They don't want to see, come down to see the site, to under, you know, to see firsthand, you know, how the community, and it's not just one school that's being impacted, it's six.
And to those people who would say, sorry, and to those people who would say, in the end, this is going to be better. You know, you're going to be better off. Other people will be better off. I mean, how long can you stand it being that way? Is it six months, a year? Is it a concern that sort of this generation of families is missing out? And that we have to find a way to make it livable while we continue to, you know, be progressive and move forward? I'm just trying to make sure that I'm really understanding the heart of what you're you're asking for is a livable community. That's that's my understanding.
Sure, it's a livable community. I mean, we're supposed to be a world-class city, but there's other cities around the world that are championing children's rights. And they're actually using it in a very clever way, not in a way where they feel like they're capitulating. They're using it in a clever way to build, like from before the next decision, deciding how it will impact those children. And then building from there. I'm not talking just playgrounds. I'm talking about egress, ingress, you know, accessibility, how people move around. Are we not, you know, are we not worried about the health of the next generation? My children now will not be biking to school for five years because of what it could have to be.
That is, bring it in. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I don't see any other questions. I appreciate your perspective. And I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thank you. Speaker number thirty-six is Eddie Emmerman.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to start off by saying hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I understand that these issues, these are monumental issues to deal with, especially in an era of what appears to be a new social order. There are many different people here with many different experiences, and I can only speak about mine. And I sympathize with the magnitude of the task at hand. I live in Gastown. I relate very, very much with many of the speakers, but currently, two of the speakers caught my attention in particular. The woman who talked about walking down the street with her head down, urinating on the bus, and the other gentleman who played the audio tape of the distressed man screaming. I manage the building I live in on Carroll Street. We have a similar person who terrorizes our building, our tenants, our business tenant, and our neighbors. This woman continually threatens everyone in the building with sharp objects. She blocks the apartment entrance door, smokes crack, she screams, she urinates, she threatens, she's nude at times. People can't enter into the building. Many staff have quit and tenants have moved out. She has serious mental health and addiction issues. She has been arrested and released numerous times on conditions which she continually violates, and the court has now abandoned those conditions. In response to Counselor Dominado's question about housing supports in relation to these issues, this woman is not homeless. And no matter what support she provides in her housing complex, she is still free to roam the streets, do drugs, and allow her mental health and trauma issues to play out unabated and affect everyone around her. Add drugs into that mix, and it's a cocktail for disaster that is evident on many Vancouver streets, which may end up in violence to others or the police ending up harming her. There needs to be mental health and addiction support beyond the walls of the housing complex. We want help for her. I'm not sure how someone in this predicament is not institutionalized. She does not seem capable of making decisions about getting or staying in care. Throwing her in jail is not the answer. This is happening all over the city. People with trauma, mental health, and addiction issues are allowed to play out their stories in public and are excused from their actions because they have these issues. I don't want to criminalize her or others, but I also don't think that she can get help while being addicted and free to roam. The successful Portuguese model decriminalizes drugs, but only if the person goes through a treatment program organized and paid for by the state. My second experience is in regards to fire safety. An old building just burned down in Gastown and people died. I have been trying to get sprinklers in my building for many years and have been stopped by the building department because of existing non-conforming building matters. Sprinklers save lives, period. And having sprinklers in the building with the current existing non-conforming building structures is better than the status quo, which we will keep rather than spending millions of dollars trying to bring the building up to the modern code in order to have sprinklers approved. We simply cannot afford to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have questions, Counselor Frye? Up to three minutes, please.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks, Eddie, for speaking to us. And you've touched on a bunch of issues that, of course, are, you know, bigger issues in provincial and federal in scope and, you know. But what piqued my interest is the piece that you just mentioned about the sprinklers. And can you expand on that a little bit? What are you saying? Is this the Blarney Stone Building we're talking about?
Yeah, it's the Blarney Stone Building. The upstairs have been sprinkled and even. We had some building permits and just to do some minor renovations. And basically, the sprinklers were just said, no, we can't put sprinklers in until we fix the existing non-conforming issue, which have been present for as long as I know of. And, you know, requiring extensive renovations of the building, which, you know, is, we'd rather just get the sprinklers in so the life safety issue, the life safety issue is abated and then, you know, work on on the existing non-conforming issues as moving forward.
Yeah, no, and that shocks me. And I'd like to follow up on that maybe offline because I think that that is a pretty, obviously, there's a lot of non-conforming buildings in Gastown on the downtown east side. And we do need to prioritize life safety. Are people living there right now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's tenants there. And seeing that building burned down just, you know, sent chills down my spine, you know what I mean? And how are we not allowed to sprinkler our building, you know? No matter what's in there, we should be able to put sprinklers.
No, I appreciate that. If you don't mind, shoot me an email. I'd love to follow up on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for speaking to Council. I think I know exactly the spot that you mean and the person you were referring to as an example. Because I had an experience where I wasn't able to enter businesses or a meeting, and it was, it was a sort of a dicey situation, sort of just basically leaving the area. And not, there was no way to kind of interact with the individual. So my question is that clearly, we're failing some people. Part of the, at the end of the day, after we've heard all the speakers tonight, staff are going to write a report with some options in terms of recommendations. Would you like to see one of those recommendations be that we are really pushing for housing with treatment services and getting people into that where they can actually live with the supports that they need? Because, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I just want to be very clear on terms of outcomes and trying to get to some sort of solution. I feel like you're describing we're failing people. We're failing people like that woman. We're failing the neighbors. We're failing the businesses that's impacting everybody. So is that, do you think that's what we need to be pushing for?
I mean, I like the idea, but like I said, it's just, people are free to leave the housing complex and do what they want. So what what is the encouragement for her to remain in the housing complex and have the treatment? Like, I hate to force anybody to do anything, but when people aren't of the right state of mind, I don't know how they make the proper decisions about their health.
Right. But in that specific situation, it's not sort of a combination medical-type facility, right? It's more sort of providing strictly housing, perhaps one support person, but you're not, you're not talking a lot of supports. What I hear you talk about is much more robust support services. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I think, I do, I would love to see a recommendation like that. And I think that it has to be in conjunction with the police force and in conjunction with the provincial court system. So that there is, you know, sort of all, you know, and some type of social services component. So there's multiple, it's a multidisciplinary program that has, you know, everybody watching someone, and that person sort of is supposed to be somewhere.
Right. So you don't favor abandoning policing, you favor bringing in all of the elements, right? Because that's what I often hear is a real polarization of this issue that we, you know, we need more mental supports and services and housing. We don't need policing. You think we need both?
Of course we do. I mean, and, you know, some of these store, I don't know about these incidents of harm or shootings by the police. But, I mean, I see the police in some situations dealing with some people like, I don't know what I would do if I was in their shoes. You know, they're just, they're, you know, they can be the first line of contact, but they need other services to pass people on to. And what I've seen from this particular person is the police have sort of one choice, and that's put this person in front of the court. You know, they don't have any other option, you know? And then when the person's let back out and they're, you know, committing civil disobedience and they're in a state of sheer terror or panic, I don't know what the police are supposed to do.
Thanks so much. That's the three minutes. Counselor DeSoto, up to three minutes.
Thanks so much. I wasn't going to ask you questions, but I have some further questions after your answers, Counselor Kirby Young. And we, since we reconvened this meeting from the original date of this meeting a couple of weeks ago, I'm wondering, what do you think about the, you know, the the study that's been commissioned by the province that will take a hundred and twenty days? I call it the study of studies because we have this data, we have the information. It's very clear that there needs to be more supports for people with mental health and addictions. We can't just give them a room and a key and a front desk person and have a revolving door where they go in for assaulting someone, come out the next day, assault someone else. So are you confident that in a hundred and twenty days, the Attorney General is going to come back with with solutions? Or do you think that it's time that we as a council look at, instead of looking to different levels of government, what small things can we do to make sure that we keep people in Vancouver who live here, who work here, who visit here safe?
Wow, Counselor, I just don't know if I'm qualified to to comment on that. I agree with a lot of things that you're saying. I just don't know the solutions. I don't know enough about the study. I just do know in other places, you know, there is a sort of, you know, people need to get treatment or be responsible if they don't get treatment for themselves. Like I said, the Portuguese model, which was the premier model of decriminalizing drugs, but that wasn't a model that didn't bear some responsibility on the user of the drug. And put some responsibility on them to go into treatment and stay in treatment. And there was some legal responsibility behind that. I mean, it's a multidisciplinary approach.
I've been to Portugal. I've studied the Portugal model. I appreciate what you're saying. I suppose when it comes down to it, though, right now, what we're doing is, I mean, what we can do, what I see is an option that other people have pointed out to us, you know, as Counselor Kirby Young has talked about, some options, is, you know, kind of putting our foot down and saying, we want to have people housed and supported. But if you're going to offer them support, offer them real support. And if not, we can't take this housing in our city because we've taken more than, more than most of the rest of the region has per capita. So do you think that's something we should?
I think we're kind of confusing homelessness with other disorder. Like I said, this woman has a home, and I don't even know what kind of support she has in the home. But every day, she can leave the home and do what she wants. And no matter what's in that housing complex, unless she has to be there, she won't be there.
Thanks very much. We're at the three minutes. Thank you so much for answering questions and coming in this evening. Appreciate it so much. And next, I'm going to speaker number thirty-seven, Jeff Burney.
Speaker thirty-seven is not on the line.
Thank you so much. Speaker thirty-eight, Karen Ward.
Speaker thirty-eight has withdrawn.
Thank you. Speaker number thirty-nine is Hilla Kerner.
Speaker thirty-nine has withdrawn.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just keeping track here. Speaker forty, Megan Fox.
Speaker forty is not on the line.
Thank you. Speaker forty-one, Martin Anderson.
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor and city councillors for having me on here. I'd just like to call in, or just wanted to call in to make some comments. I am an SFP criminologist, and so I am someone who can speak to, can speak to crime. And I've been working with police data and specifically data for, from the Vancouver Police Department for twenty years now. And referring to somebody earlier who's saying housing first doesn't work, there's actually a lot of evidence to show that housing first has empirical support. And I want to first start off by just saying that all crimes, all crimes are bad, but they have victims, especially violent crimes. And I'm not saying that there are places, that there are not places in Vancouver that are problematic and need to be addressed. Chinatown and downtown east side have come up. And I'm also not denying the experiences of the individuals who have called in today and also who have, other individuals who have had issues in the city. I want to speak to the claims made by the Vancouver Police Force, specifically Adam Palmer, regarding the increases, in particular in violent crime. All of the data that I'm going to be speaking to are actually from their website that they claim to be accurate and the data that they send to Statistics Canada. Some of the data can't be published because of confidentiality issues, confidentiality issues, but these are actually a very small percentage of data. And the, the police force in Vancouver does not provide data on serious assault or assault level two and three, so at the monthly level. Over the past twenty to twenty-five years, total crime in Vancouver has dropped fifty-five percent. This is part of a global phenomenon. This is not something that is, that is specific to Vancouver. It's been going all over, all around the world, developed nations, developing nations. Violent crime is down thirty percent, and serious crimes, like serious assaults, have remained stable over the past twenty-odd years. There has been a slight increase recently, but that is only if you consider twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, as the VPD has done, as a baseline. These calls consist of only one percent of the calls for service go to the police. Calls for service have remained stable over the past thirty years, while the number of police officers have gone up twenty percent. And so what I would just like to say here is that we do not need to base decisions on resources for police on, on a lack of empirical data. We need evidence to end up making these decisions. Police, police can end up comprising, as I'm sure city councillor and mayor, you know, over twenty percent of your budget. And your, your money is far better spent on things like housing, addiction services, mental health services, decriminalizing drugs, decriminalizing sex work. And these are obviously things that are a lot of, a number of which are outside of your purview, outside of your jurisdiction, but these are things that need to be working on. We do not need to end up having a police force in the city that ends up, in my, my opinion, fear-mongering the people of Vancouver, making them think that their city is unsafe. They can, they can talk about these data that aren't, you know, that aren't available to the public all they want, but then let's talk about transparency. They accuse you of a lack of transparency for trying to reduce their budget by a whole two percent when you had to do temporary layoffs of over twenty percent of city staff when crime during the pandemic has plummeted. Property crime, like I've published on this, I've spoken to the media on this. Rather than what the VPD seems to want to do is undermine a democratic process, undermining the authority of the city council and going to the Director of Police Services, who is a retired cop, who is now not only collecting a pension from the RCMP, but is now the Director of Police Services and ends up telling the city that they need to end up increasing the two percent that was to be removed from the police budget. And I just think this is a terrible, terrible state of affairs. And again, we don't, I am not an abolitionist when it comes to police. I believe we need the police. We just don't need more, and we arguably need less. We've not, we've not had an increase in work over the past, in the past thirty years, based on data I've seen, we go back to nineteen ninety-one, and crime has gone down. And serious crimes that have, may have gone up, have, are a very small percent, percentage of the work that they end up doing. Thank you.
Thank you. You do have questions, Counselor DeSoto? Up to three minutes.
Thanks so much. I'm looking at the data, and I really appreciate you bringing up the data. I've looked at the data also, and when we compare different years for the different pieces of data, and I think the VPD have told council in our briefings and in public council also that property crime's gone down, but violent crime has significantly gone up. And when we consider that per capita and we consider how many people were in Vancouver on a daily basis, pre-COVID versus during COVID, and for that number to go up, or even if it stayed the same, wouldn't you see that number going up? Because we didn't have people coming, not as many people coming to work in Vancouver, people weren't eating at restaurants or hanging out on the Granville Strip in Vancouver. So I'm just wondering, what do you see with the data numbers there? So I'm just wondering, what do you see with the data numbers there? Do you think there needs to be some investigation into that data? Because, I mean, it's comparing apples to oranges to compare data when there's less people in the city, but you see violence and serious crimes and assaults going up, but there's less people here.
But violence hasn't gone up. You know, based, based on the data that they've, they've been providing, that I've gotten off of their own data set that I've been, or off their website, off of the data that they report to Statistics Canada, violence is down by thirty percent over the past twenty, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. Level-two assaults have remained relatively constant. They bounce around and they are in an uptick now compared to twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. But they're all, all within, all within the ranges of the data that have been going on since nineteen ninety-eight. And if they want to end up making claims that there are these, these recent spikes, we need to put them in, in level-two assaults. We need to put these things into context. They need to provide, they need to provide their data and especially when we, so we can see where these things are occurring. Maybe there are, maybe there are huge spikes going on in areas like in Chinatown and the downtown east side, but we don't know because the VPD hasn't published their data, their violent crime data. They put out their property crime data, but not violent. And if we put these things-
I would, I just have one more question for you. I was, I was wondering if you happen to have the information as to, I mean, pre-pandemic versus in pandemic and as we recover, sort of what we're looking at, at numbers of people out in public spaces and public places where this violence is occurring? Do you have those numbers? Are you willing to share those with council like you?
I, yes, I have some of those data that are available from Google, from Google, who have actually had mobility data. And there are far fewer people, far fewer people who have been out. And, and people have been staying at home, but number, some of these assaults are occurring at home.
I have ten seconds left, so I'm just going to ask you if you could send that to us because the VPD have told us that, that serious assaults are up twenty-nine percent compared to pre-COVID. So I'd love to see your data if you'd be willing to share it. Thank you.
Yeah, I can speak to that if I'm given time and another question.
I wish, but I don't have any more time. I'm so sorry, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're good. I don't see any, any counselors on the queue. Oh, Counselor Kirby Young says come on. Counselor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll ask the simple quick question. I would love to get a copy of your data if you'd like to share it, send it to Mayor and Council. Be very happy to receive that. Is that something you could do?
It is. I'll see if I can also download, download some uploaded data. And regarding the twenty-nine percent increase in, in serious assaults, that is, these are, these are going from three a day to four a day. Again, that's another three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-five violent crimes. This is not good. But they're, this is, again, I think stands into fear mongering. When we're, you know, you talk about these increases, it's like, well, it's an increase of one.
Yes, although not very, not very heartwarming for the one, one person, but I do appreciate your point.
Of course not.
I'm conscious we have a lot of speakers tonight, so I just want to kind of be respectful of that. But if you could share your data, that would be fantastic.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any other questions for you. Very much appreciate you calling in and sharing your expertise this evening. I'm going to move to the next speaker. Okay, counsel, next speaker is Catherine Chu.
Speaker forty-two has withdrawn.
Thank you. We have Radha Winter, in-person speaker number forty-three.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Oh, sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Just want to again thank counsel for letting me speak and extending. I'm, my name is Rhonda Winter. I am the current Yeltown President at Yeltown Park One and Two Building in Yeltown. We have six hundred and eight strata law. I personally live in a townhome and on a street level. And I have seen, and I have to reiterate that I have lived in Yeltown since nineteen ninety-six. I've been in Yeltown for a very long time. Current location I've been for thirteen years. And as I was saying, I have a townhouse and I would say in the last two years, I've seen and heard a lot of people, not just the happy drunk Cleveland parties anymore. Unfortunately, it's a lot of mentally ill people that are screaming. I see them on my patio. I've had to get the heaviest chain I could find, my barbecue, everything is taped together because I've had things stolen multiple times. Our own building, the crimes has increased quite a bit, the car break-ins, the storage lockers, the bike thefts, just the overall damage. I also work as a registered nurse at St. Paul's Hospital. And up until recently, I used to walk to work in the morning if I did an early shift. I will no longer do that. I find it dangerous. I find the people that are waking up and wandering, it's just not safe for me to walk alone up the street, even just for eight blocks. So I end up either getting dropped off, taking an EVO or a taxi. So that's not very green. I see open drug use frequently on the way to work, on the way to home from work. I see it when I'm walking my, my dog in the morning. And as a nurse, I'm always concerned about overdose as what, you know, the, the person as well. But I also want to make sure there's no drug paraphernalia left around because that's a danger. My children were the first ones to go to Elsie Boy School when it opened in Yeltown. And I remember going there frequently and I'm just appalled at what I see and what the parents now have to do every morning to clean up, to make sure it's safe for their children. I used to go to a dog groomer in Yeltown. I no longer do that. I find it unsafe for me to park my car and walk a couple of blocks that I need to get there. So I had to leave that vendor to use my dog. And as for statistics, I'm hearing that the numbers are going down. However, I know personally, they don't all get reported. We're not going to keep phoning nine-one-one for this. Should we? Maybe. Is there a way to track it better? I would like to see that. Because I know that, because I do have a couple of police officers that live in my building and they're very frustrated and, and they certainly don't seem to think the crime's gone down. And they, the ones that I know do not support decreasing the police at all. And I hope that there's something we can do about this. I know that drug use and mental health is a serious problem. It's not just a problem for the city of Vancouver. But I hope there's something that we can do because for the first time, living in downtown Vancouver, I've actually thought about leaving and it's just not a good feeling. So that's all I really have to say. If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Thanks so much for your time this evening. I don't see any questions on the queue for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. But again, thank you so much for participating tonight. Counsel, speaker number forty-four has withdrawn. We have speaker number forty-five, who is Sarah.
Speaker forty-five is not on the line.
Thank you. We have Michael Geld, Geldert, Geldert, sorry, Michael Geldert.
No, forty-six is not on the line.
Thank you. We have Sandra Ho, speaker number forty-seven.
Speaker forty-seven is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. We have Jennifer Foster, speaker number forty-eight. Speaker number forty-eight, Jennifer Foster.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Sure can. I've got up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Apology, just give me one second. I was just getting my children to bed.
Okay.
Okay, just give me one, one minute.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to speak this evening on this, on this crucial topic. I wanted to tell you my most notable experience feeling unsafe in Vancouver. I was in the emergency department of St. Paul's Hospital. My family doctor had sent me to emergency to consult with a specialist. And while I was waiting there, I was verbally abused and spat on by a woman who appeared to be under the influence of something and also appeared as though she lived on the street. And as a private individual, I felt scared and uneasy. And as a social worker, I felt distraught that the woman would likely be turned out onto the street without receiving any long-lasting medical help. I know hospitals, especially downtown, are often a revolving door for people who are homeless. I also know that a portion of, of the crime experience in Vancouver, the one or the other, the other topic here tonight, comes from people who are homeless, a portion of it, because they have no economic support and many lack hope. I really believe our city doesn't need to be this way. And if we provided housing and support differently and effectively, a topic that's come up a lot tonight, for the people causing the crime, many of who commit it because their lives, they, they live with mental illness and battle addiction, that these problems could be substantially reduced. We are housing the homeless and the hard-to-housing correctly in Vancouver. We congregate these people in SROs or other supportive housing buildings. And the model has proven not to work. A congregate model works for families and low-income individuals and seniors, but it doesn't work for people living homelessness with mental illness and addiction. And this is because housing is directly related to our psychological and physical health. In family housing development, children can play in communal courtyards. Parents can cook together and support each other. Seniors can be company to one another. By contrast, in congregate housing for people with mental illness and addiction, there's the opposite effect. It requires them to be resilient to the erratic behavior and drug use of others as they try to improve their lives. People with mental illness and addiction have limited opportunities to recover when they're forced to live with others who struggle with the same issues. And when they are asked, the vast majority have a strong preference for independent housing. They want to get their lives back on track and, and, and they need, they need independent housing to do that. The Centre for Applied Research in Mental Health and Addiction has studied homelessness, addiction and mental illness and did a randomized control study with the homeless population comparing congregate housing and independent recovery-oriented housing. And the results showed that recovery-oriented housing causes significant reductions in crime, seventy-one percent is quoted in their study, fifty percent reduction in medical emergencies and fundamentally improved crime quality of life. So the, some of the solution that we experience with crime in Vancouver is available in that life and how we house people who are homeless. And unless we stop congregating people who are struggling with poverty and mental illness and addiction, I believe we will continue to experience crime and lack of safety. When I was spat on in emergency, I almost left the hospital without seeing a doctor because I was so upset. Fortunately, a doctor in, in the emerge saw that I was getting ready to leave and offered me a private room to wait in. He gave me the room where families grieve when someone dies in an emergency. I was grateful for the care, but I did not want a private room. I do not want to be privileged over the woman who needed someone's care and wasn't getting it. I sat there grieving our broken system for people who have mental health and addiction and need help. I wanted the woman to be helped effectively so that everyone in our city can feel safe. So I, I urge you to read The Call to Action by Dr. Julian Summers and to make decisions about housing people who are homeless and it gives us all a chance at a better life here in Vancouver. Also, I would just like to respond to the counselor who asked the last speaker before the break about how to respond to citizens who express concern about risks posed by people who live in supportive housing towards children. Forgive me, I've been trying to balance my own children, as you could tell. And, and I wanted to respond to that because I'm one of the people who's written about this issue, about housing people who need supportive housing next to schools or around children. And the counselor raised the point about that being stigmatizing. Not all people who live in supportive housing, of course, would present risk to children, let alone to anyone else. But I think we probably all agree that some would. And people have been, it's been mentioned tonight, some of people really struggling in their lives. And this is not stigmatizing these individuals, it's just the reality that some people who have challenges would present a risk. And I consider what happened to me an affront to my safety and something that harmed me psychologically for a period of time, made me afraid. And I imagine if this, if something like this were to happen to a child, why would we want to risk subjecting any child to an event like that? Or something that might cause them fear or reproach from other people? Why would we want children to feel unsafe in Vancouver? So the main point of my talking to you today is, is that we don't need to make a choice. It comes back to the issue, we don't need to make a choice about whose needs trump others. It comes back to the issue that support of, of how we house, how we do supportive housing in Vancouver. Congregate housing doesn't work. It's been proven not to work and, and-
Thank you.
Recovery-oriented housing is, is a good way to go. And one of my greatest hopes for the city is that you'll have the courage to, to look at that.
Thank you. You do have questions from Counselor Dajinova?
Thanks so much. And I think you've gotten to part of the heart of my question, but I'm just going to ask you to further elaborate as we look at sort of our four pillars drug strategy, right? And there's prevention in there, there's reduction, there's treatment and there's enforcement. But when we look at the prevention piece of it, would you equate it to, okay, if a young child, very young, was going to go and cross the road by themselves, there's a reason that we don't let them be alone. There's a reason that we perhaps put extra guards and protections around them. Is that a concern that you have? So it's not about stigma or fear mongering, but it's about protecting those who are most vulnerable, who can be children and they can also be people with mental health and addiction issues. Is that-
Absolutely.
One of the concerns that you have?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And, and just to, we, we heard from an earlier speaker, I'm not sure if you've had time to listen. Some evenings I'm doing these council meetings and putting my kid to bed. So I completely appreciate you staying on the line to talk to us. I'm wondering, do, do you think that it's important also that, you know, families feel safe when they walk down the street in their neighborhood? Whichever neighborhood that is in Vancouver. Do you, do you feel that that's important to make sure for equity reasons that it's not the west side or the east side, that it's everywhere in our city, downtown included?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate you writing to counsel and taking the time to speak to councils tonight as well.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thanks. That's it for questions and we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much. Speaker number forty-nine, Mark Lee.
Hi there, sorry, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay, fantastic. My name is Mark Lee. I'm calling as a member of the Chinatown community. I've been part of community service organizations in Chinatown. That includes the Yero Intergenerational Society for Justice, which works mostly with seniors, low-income, non-English speaking seniors. And in that capacity, I was a member of the Chinatown Legacy Stewardship Group, which has had some speakers already. I am a descendant of founding members of the Chin Society in Chinatown. I'm a former Chinatown business owner and I currently work with my good friend at Kamwai Tsum. So I'm going to kind of try and limit to Chinatown lines here because it's what I know. And I have indeed noticed a change in the community and lots of things have gotten worse over the last decade plus. More and more people are dying from the toxic drug supply. And despite the perceptions of many who hold stigmatizing assumptions about drug users and the currently available services, there are so many structural barriers to accessing timely and effective care that it's kind of hard to say the government has really tried a service model that could work. Multiple SROs, which were allowed to become more and more dilapidated over years and years until their residents had to be fit back into an absurdly limited, limited housing pool that has put even more strain on the housing situation in the neighborhood. Moreover, community services built by and for community members have lost their funding over the years, have had trouble finding spaces, some have dissolved and many others have had to operate in a more limited capacity. And this is not something that's happened overnight. It's been a steady deprioritization and defunding of community services. But at the same time, one thing that's been equally steady is police funding. So this, as we've already learned, is because police simply refuse to take cuts like the rest of us. I'm dismayed that some would seek to use Chinatown businesses as a wedge to justify increasing policing as a way to prevent victimization. Because what's missing from most of the speeches is stories of when police actually prevented these victimizations and stranger assaults. So when I hear people saying that we can't keep doing things the way that we have been, I don't know if they realize that they're kind of revealing that fully funding the VPD budget has not resulted in an increased perception of safety. I'd submit to you that that's because the vast majority of the complaints that we're hearing are not solved by more policing. I think what we really need is to stop pretending like police are going to save us from institutional harm. Even if we had a police officer standing on every corner of Chinatown, all that would do is displace issues to another neighborhood. I remain firmly convinced that as part of our multi-pronged approach, we need to come through and actually do housing, safe supply and supportive services properly. And that means that we need to support and scale up peer-led collective community action. So that's kind of what I have to say and I hope that that kind of gives a little bit of perspective to some of what's coming out of Chinatown right now. to some of what's coming out of Chinatown right now.
Thank you so much for your time. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to thank you and move on to the next speaker.
Thanks.
Councillor, we have speaker number uh fifty, Lynn uh Solatsky.
Speaker fifty is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. Uh, Ryder White, speaker number fifty-one.
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to uh five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, wonderful. Well, um, it's a, that's a, a really tough act to follow. Um, incredibly eloquent words there from, uh, from Mark Lee. Um, and I just wanted to speak to you all briefly. Um, not as anybody who has any special experience in, in the realm of public safety, but as a resident of the downtown east side in the Oppenheimer area, um, but also somebody who um is a, a, a member of sort of the um middle class, a film industry worker. I'm a uh straight and cis-presenting white man, so I definitely don't, I uh experience public safety um in the same way that a lot of marginalized people do. Um, and the reason that I uh signed up to talk uh to this meeting in the first place um was because I was uh concerned with the way that the meeting had sort of prioritized the perspective of um business associations and trade organizations and community policing centers, uh, as opposed to um groups who speak for um the most marginalized. I found myself wondering, um, you know, why there weren't uh more um peer drug user organizations involved perhaps, or um, you know, I could probably, given more time, come up with some better, other uh people who might have deserved higher priority on the speaker's list. But uh, I digress. Many other people uh have spoken to that issue, and I'm sure you're well aware of it. And the next time we convene in a meeting like this, um, we'll see a little bit of a difference in the representation. Um, and then I also, as I often do in these kind of situations where people are uh discussing, you know, what we should do about matters of public safety, um, I want to add my voice uh as a father. Um, I've raised my daughter in the downtown east side for four and a half years of her five-year life. And um, I take issue with parents who either consciously or subconsciously are using fear of their children's safety as uh a kind of a smokescreen um for their unwillingness to confront their own biases. Um, and I have to say, as somebody who lives a block and a half from Oppenheimer Park and who routinely walks with my daughter to daycare, um, we don't feel unsafe. Um, and many people in this neighborhood are friends with us, and they'll go out of their way to, you know, engage my daughter. And she likes talking to them, and by them, I mean people who are visibly um less fortunate than we are as a family. Um, and so I just, I, 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 I wanna make people aware that it's, it's not everybody, not all parents of young children are, you know, afraid and scared. And I think that that's, that's um, that's certainly uh, uh, I feel deeply for people who have those feelings, but I encourage them to interrogate, uh, interrogate those feelings a little bit. And lastly, I'm not sure how much time I have, I forgot to set a timer, but um, I, I just wanted to draw like one last little point, which is um, in a time we've come out of two years of pandemic, uh, wage and income inequality is like uh at a, of, an ever um expanding chasm. And uh basically, w- we are all living in the wreckage of late capitalism. And uh, is it any wonder that people are breaking windows and yelling? And I, I, it just, it doesn't seem so strange to me. Like, we should be, we should be taking care of each other and um not blaming each other for these, for these issues. And um, I think if we want to get to the root of public safety, we need to ask the people who are at greatest exposure to um the systems that we've designed to keep public safety, you know, which is basically the carceral justice system. So if you wanna know how to reduce crime, why don't you talk to people who society has labeled as criminal? And I guess I'm gonna wrap it up on that thought.
You do have questions, uh, councillor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks so much Ryder for coming in and making the points that you made, which I really appreciate. I know I used to take my grandson to um the Vancouverian Network of Drug Users office, and the most dangerous thing that happened to him there was that they gave him too much candy. Um, I was wondering if you could uh maybe just elaborate on some of the interactions that you and your family and your kids have had with people on the streets in the downtown east side?
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the things that I love about this neighborhood, and I think really um uh sort of speaks to the character of this neighborhood, is that um people who live m- m- a higher proportion of their life in public, in public space, which is to say, you know, anywhere that they can be, in parks or on the sidewalk or anything like that, um, I find that those people tend to be some of the most giving. And um, you know, we've been walking around, my daughters had people give us, you know, toys, or they just, you know, they wanna stop and like sing a song or something like that. And, you know, I, I, I think that that actually represents um closer to the pinnacle of the urban experience, um, rather than some kind of strangely sanitized uh individualist world where we can all walk around freely because we all feel safe, but the cost is that we've cleared away any conditions that allow for genuine connection. Um, so yeah, um, sorry, sorry to get a little bit away from your question councillor, but I hope that kind of answers it.
Yeah, thanks again for coming in, appreciate it a lot.
Thank you for
Thank you all for listening.
Thanks, uh councillor Dejanova has questions for you too.
Thanks so much Ryder, thanks for speaking with us. And, and I have a, a child who's about the same age as your child, I gather from your remarks. And, and I too, you know, I work in non-market housing with vulnerable people, with people who I don't have very much, if they have anything at all, and, and sometimes aren't housed. Um, and, and I have no issue with her being around them. That being said, we're hearing from people who, and, and you know, it was reported in the media not too long ago that, you know, someone downtown was walking, um, you know, with their child, and the grandmother came out and spoke to the media about this, and the child was spat on. And the week before that, her twin sister had something thrown at her. So what do you say to the parents who actually have experienced a trauma for their, for their children? I get it, I, I try not to rid my child to fear everything. I love the fact that she doesn't fear everything. But you also have to protect them at some point.
Yeah, councillor, I can, I appreciate the question, and um I have really uh deep uh sympathy um for what, you know, parents who get in the uh, uh, their, their child finds themselves victim in, to those situations. That's heartbreaking, and I wouldn't wish anybody to experience that. Um, but one other thing that has sort of popped into my mind over the course of this meeting is that um both the stories that I told um in terms of, you know, our generally positive experience living where we do, and then um the stories that you just told, as well as many, most of the other stories we've heard tonight, um, these are all anecdotes. And I think that we do need to use a little bit more caution and make sure that we're balancing um uh an appropriate amount of uh statistical and factual evidence um alongside anecdotes, because anecdotes definitely provide us with the um, the qualitative aspect of data um and the aspect of data that makes uh people's stories the most motivating. Um, but also, I think because as people were so um, were so geared for stories that things that are really dramatic seize a disproportionately high share of our, of our consciousness and our awareness. Um, and so while I, I, like, I think that's an awful experience, the story you told me.
I appreciate that.
And I don't doubt the validity of it at all. But I think we should be, we should be cautious about saying it's overrepresented. Sorry councillor, I just wanted to wrap that up.
No, I appreciate that. The person who spoke to us about her trauma and being sexually assaulted by the child, and the VPD's press release today about youth being assaulted in our city
On debate, and you're at the end of your question, it's fine, thank you.
You can email us your answer, I'm sorry, three minutes is really short, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Oh, definitely, thank you councillor.
Thanks, there are no other questions for you, I'm gonna move to the next speaker, thanks so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, councillor, we're on to uh NTS Polpat, speaker number fifty-two.
Speaker fifty-two is not on the line.
Thank you, we have Angel Gates, in-person speaker number fifty-three.
Speaker fifty-three is not in the chamber nor on the line.
Thank you clerks, uh, we have uh Alia Trotaki, uh, speaker fifty-four.
Good evening Mayor and councillor. Um, as you may remember from the times I've spoken to you before, I've been the executive director of the West End Coal Harbour Community Policing Centre for nearly twelve years. I wasn't able to speak as a community partner at the first meeting, so I'd like to tell you now about what we've been doing in our small square of the city to address public safety concerns. Due to the changing social landscape in the city, we've been adjusting our programming to keep up. One area I'd like to showcase is related to a trend I've observed at our office, which is an increase in request for an immediate response to public safety issues. We're often asked to deal with police and non-police issues that are happening in real time in the community, but we usually advise complainants to call nine-one-one, non-emergency, three-one-one, or other service providers as necessary. Last year, we physically responded in real time to forty-one community complaints. That was nearly five percent of all the reports we received. Now I realize five percent is not all that impressive, it's not all that sexy, but it is when you compare it to immediately responding to about two percent of reports in previous years. The other thing to keep in mind is it's not our original mandate to physically respond. Community policing centers were designed to complement police services by providing crime prevention education and conducting personal safety activities in the community. Now we're acting as an alternative when police are not required, or police, or people are unwilling to call, or there is no one else that can, or will, or are able to respond within a timely manner. Our immediate response actions range from sending a volunteer foot patrol, foot patrol team who is already out in the community, sending a pair of volunteers from the office, or one of two staff members leaving the office and checking on something ourselves. The issues we immediately responded to included wellness checks, verbal altercations, removal of dangerous waste, and assault. It's also important for me to note here as well that in the past eight months, our foot patrol volunteers have witnessed two stranger attacks, one of which was on an elderly individual. The volunteers not only provided emotional support to the victim, but they were also good witnesses, called nine-one-one, and were able to get the suspects apprehended. Another shift we have incorporated is when dealing with street disorder and the individuals involved in what is considered street disorder. For the past two or three years, we have been actively engaging with more people on the street and are using more trauma-informed approaches when talking with them. Historically, CPCs have acted in a observe and report capacity for the VPD, but again, not all concerns are police-related. When we approach individuals who appear to be under the influence of opioids, although we're wearing branding which identifies our organization, our approach is to ask the individual if they're okay, remind them of the health risks of doing drugs in isolation or alone, encourage them to use safe injection sites, and provide them with the information about the closest injection site if it's needed. When we approach individuals who appear to be experiencing homelessness, rather than introducing ourselves as community policing volunteers, we just say we're with the local CPC. We find this helps to reduce the triggering that sometimes happens upon hearing the word policing. In twenty-twenty-one, during our wellness checks, we distributed fifty-six cold weather kits to unhoused individuals in our community in January, February, November, and December. And we distributed seventy-one hot weather kits through June, July, and August. The last thing I'd like to bring up is in reference to the commercial crimes, the shoplifting, the broken windows and doors, and the under-reported crimes. Our foot patrol volunteers have been visiting the businesses in our area to talk about the crime trends, to help reduce the under-reported statistics. From October fifteenth to December fourteenth, our volunteers visited one hundred and seventeen, one hundred and seventeen businesses, and shockingly, seventy-one percent of those businesses had not reported their victimization to police. Seventy-one percent. Without our patrols, those issues would continue to be unreported and as a result, unknown and unanswered by the police. So our catchment area is about one-eighth of the entire city, maybe one-sixth of the city. If all of us were able to start to see the bigger picture and work together, I believe we would be able to make, to make positive changes in the city. As Chief Palmer said on the first day of this meeting, it can't be an either-or model when it comes to public safety and the organizations involved in driving it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. I don't see uh anyone with questions for you, so just thank you so much for your time tonight and uh your contribution to the city, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, fifty-six, speaker number, sorry, fifty-five is uh Tamara Heitner.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Okay, thank you, and I'm also, like someone said, a little bit nervous, so bear with me here. Okay, um, Mayor and
We don't mind, go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much for hearing me this evening. Uh, I live in Kitalano in what is deemed to be a relatively safe neighborhood. I put that in quotes, although less so since the recent, uh, recent murder in the, in the neighborhood. Um, but I don't always feel safe and regularly, regularly witness reckless behavior endangering others and crime. Like, like others, I have concerns about under-reporting of crime due to incredibly long hold times for the non-emergency number, limited by law enforcement putting even more pressure on the police, limited proactive policing, et cetera. I have personally given up on reaching the, the non-emergency police line many times due to excessive hold time. I, I have waited up to an hour and forty-five minutes before giving up. The lack of proactivity, i.e. patrols, uh, and addressing what are not seen as violent crimes or as a police chief references as low-level crimes, the lack of reasonable ability to reach police in a timely manner, and sometimes limited response by police emboldens people to do things they would not otherwise do. Safety, peace of mind, and feeling that concerns are taken seriously are all disappearing in the city. This falls in part on the police, but also on the city. Housing affordability and general affordability, both contributing to the mental health, addiction, and general health crises, are contributing to stress and desperation increasing crime. The lack of city response to these contributory issues, as well as the lack of proactive policing, means that crime is running rampant. This is the only city I have lived in, and I've lived in five cities, where I have repeatedly witnessed people walking out of stores like London Drugs and Markworth Warehouse, among others, with big-ticket items, sometimes without even an effort for them to get, to conceal the items. Businesses seem at a loss as to what to do and won't pursue thieves for fear of violence. Writing item off, writing, writing items off only increases costs for paying customers and contributes to the ongoing unaffordability of the city. Street racing is also rampant and out of control, and this is often not pursued. Uh, the VPD wants um information, but only so that if somebody is injured, they can pursue them. There isn't a lot of proactivity to actually do that. Just the other, since the last meeting, I witnessed a car take a corner so quickly that it fishtailed before roaring off down a busy street. Additionally, the city, police, Parks Board, and Transit Police need to work together and proactive, uh, proactively. I belong to a neighborhood group that discusses thefts where people have identified crimes taking place. I have witnessed and documented vandalism um to TransLink, and nothing was done about it because it's perceived as too expensive for Transit Police or police to enforce. As a result, those who start off vandalizing public property with no consequences, not even a fine, will likely be embold, feel emboldened to move on to private property or some other mischief or crime as there is little enforcement. Laws here are almost meaningless because of the lack of enforcement. The city, VPD, Parks Board, and Transit Police need to work collaboratively. I have walked into an alley near my home at dusk, and for glancing over at someone by a dumpster had a knife pointed my way. I've been in a parking lot where twenty minutes later, there was a shooting in the alley behind it. I have witnessed people on the street so enraged or high that they were yelling and repeatedly throwing their bikes against a tree. I have seen firecrackers set off horizontally down the street and an alley. I have seen piles of tills left on walls, people leaning into paper bins with, with lighters appearing ready to set a fire. All of these contribute to diminished feeling of safety in our city. I have been a city dweller my whole life, and this is the only city I've lived in where I felt more unsafe, the only city I've lived in that where I felt more unsafe are parts of Miami. I have witnessed four police officers standing by during an event with I have witnessed four police officers standing by during an event with a piece of art being used as a drum, and when I asked if they were going to do anything, they said not in life unless the life was immediately in danger. With four officers, I could not understand why there was no attempt to protect property. Uh, and by the way, I apologize, I timed this as five minutes, so bear with me, I'm almost done. We need, we need patrols in all areas of the city to deter crime, including violent crimes, but also trespassing thefts and dangerous behavior. This is the only city where I've lived where I do not feel safe going out on Halloween, a night where children should feel safe. Firecrackers being set off horizontally down the street and in the alley behind where I live made me feel unsafe to exit my home. This might seem like just mischief until someone gets hurt, like the woman who had a firecracker enter her bedroom a couple of years ago. I'm aware that firecrackers have since been banned, but you still hear them, and it takes people getting hurt for any action to be taken. Prevention and a proactive policing, proactive policing play a huge role in public safety, but appear to be lacking in Vancouver. In fact, there were more proactive, i- i- in, in fact, if there were more proactive patrols addressing dangerous and reckless behaviors, firecrackers may not have had to be banned at all. Um, we also need more bylaw enforcement at all hours. This will take pressure off the police um, so that they can spend their time enforcing, enforcing laws. Um, we need more uh, proactive um, uh, proactivity by police um, um, in not only uh, business districts, districts, but also in communities. Um, we need community policing offices that aren't just staff with volunteers, but also where there are police officers for people to connect with and, and come and report crimes and, and let the police know what's going on in their community. We all deserve
You're, 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 sorry, you're out your five minutes? So I, I want to thank you so much for
I have a one sentence left. It was just, nobody should feel unsafe leaving their home and walking through their city day or night. Thank you, mayor and council for your time and for listening.
Thank you very much. Uh, clerks, I just want to make sure that we have a quorum. I don't think we, oh, we might have now. Just remind councillors that you have to have your uh, video on to be counted for quorum. I think I see enough for quorum now. Thanks very much. Um. Council, we are now moving on to the next speaker. Uh, speaker number fifty-six, Randall Hertzak.
Speaker fifty-six is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. Uh, Cinnamon Barani is uh, speaker number fifty-seven.
Speaker fifty-seven has withdrawn.
Withdrawn? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we have speaker number fifty-eight, Colin McGrath.
Speaker fifty-eight is not on the line.
Thank you. Uh, speaker number fifty-nine is Eva Wadoina.
Uh, no, uh, speaker fifty-nine is not on the line.
Thank you. Speaker number sixty, Lewis Hart.
Hello.
Hi there. Um, just before you start, um, clerks, we are coming near the end of the list. I'm just wondering if you might be able to compile the names I called and folks weren't here, uh, so I can go through that um, in a few minutes, and then we're going to move on with uh, Lewis Hart. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, so my name is Lewis. I'm a small business owner in Chinatown. Uh, as a small business owner in Chinatown, I'm sharing the same frustrations as other speakers who have shared their experiences, statistics, and opinions during this meeting. Um, however, I want to come with this uh, a recommendation more than anything today. Um, I think we will share experiences and just adding to the pile isn't going to help. Um, so this is with the consultation with and um, approval and recommend, and um, approval of uh, the Chinatown Merchant Association, the Vancouver Chinatown Foundation, and the BIA. Um, today, I just want to present a viable and economical solution to improving public safety through community and business means, um, but also highlight the inverse effect of pub, uh, to public safety a current bylaw has on designated areas, especially Chinatown. Um, in reference to Chinatown and Gastown, Vancouver's liquor moratorium has severely limited community vigilance, economic growth, and exposure of social needs to younger generations. The moratorium's initial uh, inclusion of the downtown east side and surrounding areas is perceived as another policy made with racial undertones against a bustling Chinatown, the once-housed legends such as Sammy Davis Junior and Nina Simone. Meetings since its inception um, have uh, scapegoated hospitality operators using misrepresented or misconstrued data in order to maintain a narrative that liquor-serving establishments provide an unsafe environment for all levels of society. Although the phrase "we blame bars" was not publicly used in the twenty-seventeen's upholding, the data misuse of micro and macro data to provide linear correlations between bars and public safety was very apparent. The most notable misuse of data is such that between two thousand and seven and two thousand and twelve, the number of liquor primaries increased by forty-two percent, whereas the number of calls to police increased by forty-four. This data failed to extract the Olympics, the Stanley Cup Riot, a booming tourism trade, and a population increase of a hundred and forty percent in the downtown east side prior between nineteen ninety-one and the two thousand and seven study. It also failed to mention the introduction of Bar Watch, a hospitality-led initiative, where bars were directed to be vigilant and call the police, but this vigilance was used against us in two thousand and seventeen. Covid allowed for all fragmented parts of society to show the best, in the best and worst light. Public safety issues that are being mentioned during this meeting are all at their worst where liquor moratoriums exist, as they provide a chokehold on business development, as well as a license monopoly creating a slow and steady decline of operational standards as society evolves. Uh, industry has evolved drastically over the last fifteen years into a much more vibrant and inclusive space than archaic and stubborn views perceive. Walking through Chinatown, the graffiti issue has evidently worked in areas where there is no top, night, night, uh, sorry, night, nighttime-focused businesses. West Kiefer and East Kiefer have stark differences in graffiti, and public perceptions of residents on East Georgia is that they feel a lot safer since the introduction of nighttime businesses and a younger, more socially-aware crowd. Chinatown's previous legacy night destinations have since closed, and a fresh diligent face has emerged as its core. Four Chinatown venues were listed with global accolades last week by our industry's version of the Oscars. Chinatown's evening scene is now led by female-owned businesses such as Kissatansu and Chickadee Room, legacy businesses by our industry standard such as the Irish Heather and Kiefer Bar, and businesses owned by young entrepreneurs like Fioreno and La Wye. But the moratorium places ninety percent of the mentioned businesses at risk um, and limits the potential for new businesses to come in and fill vacant stores. Sorry, I just lost my spot there. Uh, food primary licensing states that kitchens must remain open for service to continue with a much reduced capacity. This has caused some businesses to be closed due to lack of staff, rather than practice responsible liquor service. Like many, we are facing the la- largest labor shortage our, our industry has faced, and kitchen and closing staff do not feel safe to work in Chinatown. Our supplies are all bought from Chinatown, using legacy businesses, providing an extra lease on life, while tourism and public safety perceptions are decreasing. The three new restaurants in East Georgia alone will inject over six hundred thousand dollars into legacy businesses this year, which will cover base operating, uh, base rent and uh, labor fees. Um, our presence provides an extra sense of community and support for, for the local area, providing free charity to local social causes and jobs to reside, residents living in the SROs. All we're providing a street-facing and vocal disdain to anti-Asian racism seen on a daily basis. Our services are primarily after five P M, providing an extra nine hours of street activity in the areas affected by petty crime. And since all of the locations in East Georgia have opened in the last year, there has not been one police incident caused by our patrons. In the last month alone, no less than three of the city councillors have visited these businesses, and the mayor is a frequent visitor to a couple himself. These are responsible businesses that need the bylaws to change, and the legacy businesses, either side of them, need these businesses to be viable. The economics of uh, the rooms and spaces in Chinatown do not allow us to pay more than we currently are, which for kitchen staff is still sitting above what the city deems as a living wage. The economics of the spaces also do not allow for large-scale opera, operators to be interested in the area.
Thanks so much. We are, uh, we, we are uh, uh, ways over your five minutes, but you do have questions? So I'm going to turn you over to councillor Fry for three minutes.
Yeah, and thanks uh, for speaking, Lewis. I, I do have to take umbrage with one of your points. I think there's been probably more than three councillors visiting some of the establishments in the neighborhood. Um, I want to just focus on the liquor moratorium because that has, has been a, a subject um, for some time, and, and when it was originally sort of brought in, it was really to address some of the more problematic liquor primary establishments. Now, I totally appreciate what you're saying um, about how it adds vibrancy. I think one of the things the liquor moratorium was, was trying to address in the day was some of these bigger, more boisterous uh, beer halls that we used to see a lot more of in the downtown east side. A lot of the, the violence endemic to that, and of course, the, the clubbing scene that would bring in outsiders to the downtown east side and create, you know, big sort of melee of hooligans coming out of, out of clubs when it closes at two o'clock.
Sorry, somebody uh, needs to be muted there, but uh, keep going, councillor Fry.
Yeah, so I guess I just, I, I just wanted to a- a- ask Lewis about, about that perception and the, the reasoning behind the original liquor moratorium, that context, and how it compares to what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the industry's changed massively even in the last twenty years. I think even as hospitality operators, no one even wants a nightclub anymore. Um, and so all we're looking is for some flexibility to be able to operate within what is a new norm for the industry. Um, what you're seeing in more progressive cities is spaces that are very food-focused until nine, ten o'clock, but then want that flexibility to scale down their kitchen, um, which at, at the moment is costing anywhere between seventy to eighty dollars in labor for less than a hundred dollars worth of food. Um, but the, the problem is, is if, if you don't have a kitchen, we can't operate as a business. Um, and that, that causing businesses to be closed on certain days, um, all it's doing is it, it's causing a negative effect on those businesses, but it's also allowing an extra period of time for criminals to cause petty crime. Um, when we're all kind of running full steam and we're open till one, two o'clock in the morning, that only provides a four-hour window for a criminal to, to commit a petty crime until the morning businesses come in. But on East Kiefer, when there's no nighttime businesses there, that's a fourteen-hour window. Um, and so it's not looking to drop the liquor moratorium, but to look at what it currently does to public safety and what it does to local businesses that are diligent, um, because it doesn't allow us to have any breathing room whatsoever during the current circumstances. Um, and how we
Okay.
support the, uh, support the local area, that it's a, it's a lifeline.
Okay, appreciate that. I'm out of time. I wanted to ask you about local hiring, but I'm out of time.
Councillor Kirby Young, up to three minutes, please.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'll pick up on councillor Fry's, and I do think there may have been some councillors that have spent some time on that block, um, supporting local business. He's correct. Um, the question that I have for you, other than sort of the liquor moratorium, is um, a couple of questions, is you're speaking also to sort of flexibility across multiple categories or use on space. Is that correct? Because I hear that a lot. You know, I have to apply for, I have to be a bar, or I have to be a restaurant, or, you know, somebody wants to be a coffee shop and retail. So are you also identifying the issue of um, not having enough flexibility in use of space?
Yeah, we can't even apply, like, restaurants here can't even apply for dual licensing. So we can't even come across a situation where we can apply for a, a liquor primary with the, with say, a caveat of uh, kitchens remaining open till nine P M. Um, or ten P M, and being, everyone must be seated until that time. Uh, we don't, we don't have anything like that, and after ten o'clock, families are not walking through Chinatown. It is, it is a young demographic. Chinatown, by percentage, has the largest percentage of people under the age of thirty-five residing in it right now. And so it is a local community that is coming out.
Okay, and then just to keep going, just because I have limited time. So, you know, in addition to sort of the, the business opportunity and filling up those empty storefronts and having more opportunities, um, is it also, do you, in your mind, it contributes to public safety that you're having sort of more vibrancy and people coming and going at different times of the day within the neighborhood?
Yeah, it definitely adds to public safety because, again, um, when, when these businesses were first opening or dur- during the construction phase, nothing was open after five o'clock and graffiti was starting from eight P M. And now with people leaving at two in the morning and staff leaving at three till four, it's such a limited window that there's been a vast difference in the amount of graffiti. Um, the other part of it as well is allowing younger people to see the downtown east side and people with social needs um, that aren't committing crime and being able to differentiate between someone who is a criminal and someone who's just residing in the area. Um, as opposed to just seeing it going on social media and seeing a very bug-fiedy post that says, yet again, smashed window, yet again, graffiti. Um, we're not going to be able to differentiate between the good and the bad of society if we're not exposed to it.
Okay, and then lastly, would you, um, I know that you had some more detailed information there. It sounded like you prepared your comments. If that's right, and you did write them down, would you mind emailing them and sharing them with councillor?
Yeah, the, the stats are all readily available. The, uh, all I did was pretty much copy and paste um, from the twenty-seventeen liquor moratorium recommendations. Um, and I think just from a glance, you can kind of see, there's a lot of data that doesn't really paint anybody else as the problem apart from bars. And uh, unfortunately, as everything else is progressing, um, and people with safe supply are seen as kind of helpful in the community, bar operators selling alcohol are still being perceived as people mixing gin in bathtubs and selling illicit goods.
Okay, that's my time. Thanks so much, Lewis.
Thanks for your time. Uh, questions for you? Appreciate you coming in tonight. And I am going to move to the uh, final-listed speaker, sixty-one, Courtney Baker.
Speaker sixty-one is not on the line.
Okay, clerks, uh, thank you so much for uh, sending back the list of um, previously absent speakers. So council, now I'm going to go back through the list and call the names of the folks that I, that were listed. I called their names and they weren't here, so just the regular practice.
Unemployed privilege, mayor? Have the speakers been notified, or could they be notified that we're going through the list again?
I did mention it a number of times through the meeting, but uh, clerks, have uh, speakers been notified?
Just because it's gone over two days, mayor Stuart, that's why I have.
Yes, clerks, thank you.
Uh, yes, they have all been notified. They were notified before the dinner break as well.
Great, thank you so much. So I'm going to start with speaker number B, who is Norman Leach.
Uh, no, not on the line.
Okay, clerks, thank you. Uh, speaker number one, who is Zafaria Glarus.
Uh, no.
Thanks. Uh, speaker four, Richard Flynn.
Uh, no.
Thank you. Uh, speaker five, Catherine Hallensey.
Yes.
Hi there. Thanks very much for uh, being so patient and uh, calling in this evening. Uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Um, you know, it's something to have my name mentioned as being part, as a speaker because um, there was a speaker who spoke out about Chinatown and the difficulties she was having, and she has been um, kind of bullied and abused on Twitter in the last couple of days. So, you know, I would prefer that my name doesn't go out there for that reason. I don't feel safe sometimes um, speaking my truth because I feel like I'm going to get attacked from all sorts of entities in this city. But anyway, let me speak to what I want to really talk about, which is I don't feel safe when we don't really have a lot of community consultation where decisions are made by people who are faceless. And um, I'll just give you an example. I've been hearing today that the overdose prevention site on Seymour and Helmkin, that the lease has just been renewed. Now, the overdose prevention site has had a lot of impact on our neighborhood, not for what goes on inside the building, but for what goes on outside it. And um, that's not the only, obviously, social s- service and building that we have around our neighborhood. There have been lots of other issues. But anyway, two years ago, the overdose prevention site was, um, despite the community not wanting it, it was established, and I thought to myself, well, at least when it comes up for renewal, there'll be some discussion about it. City councillors will talk about it, and then we'll be able to phone in. It just sounded like the, the obvious. But I'm hearing that it's been renewed, that it's been renewed by um, apparently a city staff member. It has never been brought to debate. And I, this is just something I don't really understand. It doesn't strike me, actually, it's particularly Canadian. It strikes me as something more, um, well, sort of Russian in flavor, if you like, where decisions are made, as I say, by people that, um, we don't know. We don't know what their political views are. We don't know what their agenda is, and we can't speak to them. There has been no community consultation in what is happening in our neighborhood. And that's just something that I And that's just something that I expected of Canada. I feel really let down. And I try to avoid crossing Seymour and Helmut. I mean, it's difficult because there's Granville as well, which can also be a little bit of a bouncy area. Um, and this lovely area that was created, a park, a little dog park, a playground, everything is so precious. And yet, um, it is being changed by, I don't know, people that don't live here, people that have no interest in talking to the people who live here. And that doesn't make me feel safe when I have no voice. And just one more thing, I've lost three friends who've left this neighborhood because they just can't take it anymore. I've been living here a couple of years and I too am thinking now of leaving. Um, because I just don't see how things are going to change for the better. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do you have a question from Counselor Dejanova? Counselor Dejanova, please go ahead.
Thanks, um, Kate, for coming to speak to council. You had spoken a little bit about the public safety issues, um, that you feel and that you encounter uh, around the OPS in, in your community. And at the time we had that meeting, um, although that was changed from a two thirds vote and a grant to a lease, um, mid-meeting, actually, uh, over a weekend. I'm wondering, did you feel that the terms and conditions of this good neighbor agreement were met?
No.
Okay. Um, have you heard anything about a good neighbor agreement? I mean, I know that more would have gone with that grant, but just wonder.
I have heard about it. I haven't heard much of the, many of the details. Um, I don't know if it was signed off on. I don't know whether they had to, and I don't know whether if they did, they're following it. All I know is that quite often around Helmut Nelson, it's a bit of a mess.
Okay. And can I ask you, I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, so you don't have to answer my questions, but personally, what have you, what behaviors have you changed? I mean, you, you've shared with us that you've lost friends, um, in the neighborhood. But are you, are you unable to walk to go grocery shopping, to use the park? I mean, what is it that, that concerns you about your own public safety, if I can ask?
Um, well, I just prefer to avoid what might be possible. I mean, have I been personally attacked going past the OPS? No. Do I know people that have? Yes. So, um, I just try and err on the side of caution by crossing the road, that kind of thing. Because why invite trouble if I don't have to?
Okay. And do you feel safe in your neighborhood?
Um, I feel safe in the neighborhood I used to live in, which was Tinseltown. Sorry, um, cross town. Um, but would I go out at night at about, if I had to get to the airport very early and stuff? Um, would I go out at four or five A M? No, I would not. No. But, um, generally speaking, there's a lot of people here in a way. So there's kind of safety in numbers, but there are certain times of the day or night when you, you would be safer staying indoors.
And, and thank you for sharing that. And, and can I ask, I mean, when you've said that you've heard stories of others who have been assaulted or have had run ins or been the victims of violent attacks, that's made you not want to walk by the OPS and you feel that the reason for that is to avoid that situation and putting yourself in harm's way? Is that correct?
Sorry, Counselor Dejanova, you're at the end of your time.
I'm sorry, maybe, maybe, maybe if you have remarks, you could send them to us.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for calling in tonight and sharing your views. Um, I am going to move, uh, to calling the next speaker's name, but thank you for calling in. Uh, we have speaker eleven, Sophia, uh, Seehole.
Speaker eleven's not on the line.
Thanks. Speaker twelve, Tony Fung.
Uh, no, not on the line.
Uh, speaker fourteen, Sean Patrick Finan.
Uh, hi there, I'm here.
Thanks very much. Uh, whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Okay, uh, uh, I live in Vancouver and I work in the film industry, uh, for the, uh, twenty-five years, twenty-three of them here in Vancouver. And I'd like to speak to the changes in the last few years, uh, in the film industry. Uh, twenty years ago, outside of the downtown east side, we mostly came in, we filmed, we cleaned up after ourselves and we moved on. Now it seems everywhere within the city of Vancouver, we must bring in large pre-cleaning crews in before we film to power wash the streets, do a massive needle sweep, clean up human feces. And because this cleanup is so extensive, it has to be done days in advance. And once done, multiple security guards need to be posted everywhere to protect the area so that it does not become compromised overnight. The day of filming, a smaller follow-up cleaning crew comes in, do the similar work. We used to clean the filming area and maybe the alley, if we had to cable or, or power through the alley. Now we clean blocks and blocks of street parking, the set, the parking lots, where the base camp is where we park the catering trucks, lunch tents, and then, uh, security has to be positioned everywhere. Last fall, I was with a production that filmed multiple days downtown and the production had a warning to our, you know, in the safety meeting each day for our crew to be careful within the city to not walk the three blocks to the crew parking lot, but rather wait for transport to pick them up and bring them there. I recently worked with an American producer who last did a movie in Vancouver in two thousand and five. She spoke of the changes. She said that then downtown east side was bad, but the rest of the city felt safe. Now these complex problems seem to be everywhere and that Vancouver no longer feels like a safe city. We are hearing it more and more on set. Vancouver's not a safe city, it's not a clean city. And these cleaning costs are massive. Each day can be an extra ten thousand dollars in cleaning and security. And up to now, the Vancouver, the film industry has been eating these costs, but, you know, booking the Vancouver Police to assist additional security on set is extremely helpful, but that's a big ticket cost. The Vancouver Police Officer is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour per officer. Per however many officers per day on a twelve-hour day, the cost gets out of control very fast. Movies and TVs come to Vancouver for a lot of different reasons, but the one overall reason is that the costs are less in Vancouver. And that, and that something like this, a big ticket item like the Vancouver Police Department, booking them to just keep the crew safe, you know, could add half million dollars to a sixty-five day movie shoot. This is a line item that could be the difference between movies coming to Vancouver and going elsewhere. And I'm, you know, I'm speaking, there, there's bigger problems out there with the crime and safety, but I'm speaking to my experience in working in Vancouver, becoming not a safe place to work anymore. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I am just checking here. Oh, you do have questions, Counselor Dejanova, up to three minutes, please.
I'll wait till my timer restores my, thanks. Um, and I should let Counselor Hardwick go first because she, she's actually worked in the film industry, but I'm, I'm going to ask you, can you tell me, is it tough to get people in the film industry to want to work in Vancouver? I mean, to bring their cars into Vancouver, to, you know, put themselves in, in the way of, as you've described it, sort of this mayhem that, that we're seeing and hearing about?
We, we have to have, it was in the safety meetings, we're warning our people to, uh, uh, take the transit with friends and/or if they're driving, to, to take the shuttle, to not take the address and show up at work. And so, uh, this was not a thing twenty years, this wasn't a thing five years ago, but now we have to talk about safety and about needles and about cleaning and these costs. And so, um, it is a big deal. And we do have people that turn down work in Vancouver and they accept it, you know, when you're on a farm someplace, but they won't accept work in Vancouver.
So they go out to Langley or Coquillam, work at like, you know, sort of a, a set on, like near River View, but not in downtown Vancouver, Gastown, as much, is that correct?
It's become, it's become, all of Vancouver, even the West End has become very difficult to film in, where you find needles in the West End that you never found before. And, uh, we do have people that refuse work in Vancouver and, uh, and, and like you said, they will accept it. And the movie industry is moving out of Vancouver. They're starting to move east. They're starting to move into Langley. They're starting to move into these places. But part of that is trying to preserve the lower mainland and, uh, then the fact that Vancouver is not a safe place to do business anymore.
So is this kind of like, I mean, we've heard a lot this past week about the first thing the cruise ships and the tourists are going to see are the tents and crab parks when they come to town and that might concern them. Uh, they may read the stories in Vancouver. Isn't the same thing in the film industry where, you know, the more word of mouth, the more they hear about this, the more safety briefings, as you've mentioned, people have to have, that they worry about why they're having them and, and why bother if the pay is the same in Langley? Are you concerned that we're actually going to see, um, economic repercussions in Vancouver, in the city?
Uh, absolutely. Like it, you know, it, in a, if you had a movie that was heavily dependent on filming in a downtown environment, it could be a half million dollar budget item to just clean the streets and have a police officer with you during the day while you're filming. And so it absolutely could push the movie out of Vancouver or push it out of B C, which is, you know, and then going to Ontario or Atlanta or London, England.
So your colleagues, I can just ask, sorry, I'm close to the end of my time, but your colleagues from the U S, when they come to Vancouver, what did they say to you about the state of our city?
Uh, they're concerned about the drug, drug use. Uh, Canadian film crews are used to seeing people shooting up on the streets and they used to turn their back on it or used to, uh, seeing it. And here we come in on our budget items and we're hiring people in case someone overdoses. We're hiring security. We're cleaning up and they see these budget items and they're concerned. And they're wondering, well, why are we paying for all this cost for people that are, that are shooting up right in front of our film set that are, that it needs to be cleaned up, that the crew needs to be kept safe? And they're concerned about spending this money and wondering if they're in the wrong place, if they made the wrong decision and they're shooting in the wrong area.
Unfortunately, that Counselor hasn't left you enough time to answer your question. We'll go to Counselor Hardwick, uh, for three minutes, please.
Hi, Sean. So you're a location manager. I just looked you up on the I M D B.
Oh, thank you.
So you've been doing this since, so you didn't, been doing this since the early two thousands?
I've been doing it since the nineties. So since, uh, I started in Alberta, but yes, I've been in B C since nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, it's funny because I was location managing, uh, back in the mid, late eighties and, and, uh, often shooting um, in Gastown and Chinatown, downtown east side. Um, and reflected on a TV movie we did called Christmas on Division Street in, uh, ninety ninety-one, which was about an old homeless man where we were shooting in the back alleys behind the, the Balmoral. And then just reflecting on how, yeah, can you imagine today? Uh, how much things have changed? And, um, a- as you know, and I think pointed out, it's a competitive process. Uh, there's, you know, people sitting in Los Angeles that are crunching the numbers and budgeting us against Toronto and Atlanta and Albuquerque and everywhere else. Um, but all cities are struggling with these kinds of problems. Do you hear echoes of, of this, uh, from your, uh, from the producers coming in that they're having similar problems in other cities?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm hearing that, uh, well, I, mostly what I'm hearing about is the surprise that it, that it's here in Vancouver. And that they were coming here for a lot of reasons. A lot of times they're told they're coming here and, and it's really about money. And then they get here and these costs are not budgeted for. And, uh, they're really surprised by the security and they got to keep the, the film crew safe and people dial these one eight hundred numbers to click, you know, to complain that there was someone in the crew park or that there was someone this. And, and so these costs just grow and grow and grow. And I think, you know, you're referring to the nineties, but we used to clean sort of the, the back alley that we were filming in. Now you got to clean the blocks where the trucks are parked. Like it's not even, you're not even filming there and you, you got to bring in all this security and these power washers and you got to pick up all these needles. And everyone's afraid of what they're, you know, what they're stepping around. The next thing you know, we got to bring in modular fencing to protect the trucks and to stop people from, from going through them. And, and that's a huge, huge cost that didn't exist even ten years ago.
Well, I hear you. I, again, watched this happen. You'll laugh. I remember doing a movie called, um, of, oh, God. It, it was, uh, set in Chinatown primarily and we had to bring in garbage because Vancouver was too clean in, uh, Gastown, Chinatown area. Yeah, how times have changed. Well, thanks very much for your insights in this. Year of the Dragon was, was what it was. It was a Michael Chiamino picture, Year of the Dragon. But anyhow, aside.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We just want to keep the work coming to Vancouver and, and, uh, this is a problem and we just want to keep people safe and have a safe place to come and, and, and work.
Thank you. Uh, we're at your three minutes and we're going to move on to the next speaker. There are no, uh, more questions for you. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Okay, thank you. I'm just pulling up the list here, counsel. And we have Cheryl Grant, speaker number sixteen.
Uh, speaker sixteen is not on the line.
Thanks. Uh, Brendan Cottick, seventeen, speaker seventeen.
No, not on the line.
Thanks. Alexandre Tratier, speaker twenty.
No.
Curtis Robinson, speaker number twenty-five.
No.
Stephen Hahn, speaker twenty-seven.
Not on the line.
Thank you. We have Shirley, one, one name, uh, twenty-nine.
No.
Uh, Ronald Sarnas, uh, speaker thirty.
No.
Scott Shepherd, speaker number thirty-two.
No.
Jeff Bernier, speaker number thirty-seven.
No.
Megan Fox, speaker number forty.
No.
Uh, speaker forty-five, Sarah.
No.
Speaker forty-six, Michael Geldert.
No.
Lynn, uh, Lynn Sawatsky, speaker fifty.
No.
MTS Popehat, speaker fifty-two.
No.
Angel Gates, fifty-three.
No.
Uh, Randall, uh, Herzak, speaker fifty-six.
No.
Colin McGrath, speaker fifty-eight.
No.
Eva Wadland, one, one on that, speaker fifty-nine.
No.
And the last speaker, uh, I think he emailed me the name is Courtney Baker.
Uh, yeah, one moment, please.
Thanks.
There seems to be somebody on the line. We're just trying to find out who, so we'll, um,
Okay, thank you.
Just one moment, please.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Stewart. Uh, yes, no, no other callers are on the line.
Thank you so much, clerks. Okay, so that concludes our agenda. We have, uh, no other speakers listed and we've called through the list of those who are miss, uh, not present, uh, as per our bylaws. So counsel may submit further questions to staff by email to Deputy City Manager Karen Levitt and responses will be provided via memo or incorporated in the report to counsel in June twenty twenty-two. With that, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, uh, Counselor Dejanova?
Oh, I was on the list. I didn't know. I was just supposed to put myself on the list.
For, for which?
To ask a question. I was going to ask more of a point of procedure, but you said we could ask questions. So my point of procedure is just, does staff currently have scheduled the date of the meeting in June, that this will be coming back this report?
It's more of a point of procedure, I guess.
We could ask questions, so.
You could submit, you could submit further questions to staff by email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't really, nobody's got the floor at this point. Um, there's no.
I'm happy to adjourn and just wait for that information to come forward.
So Counselor Hardwick, thank you. Have a second or?
Motion to adjourn.
We have, uh, Counselor Dejanova, second, all in favor, yay.
Yay.
Oppose, nay. Great. Thanks so much for adjourned. Thank you much, everybody, for participating. Thank you, clerks, for your time and we'll see you shortly, everybody. Thanks. Thanks.